The layout here of the floor is the same as it usually is. The non-voting section is the bleacher section immediately to my right, to my right. So if there's any voters in that section, you need to move to another spot on the floor. And any non-voters, please move to the non-voting section at this time. Anyone who wants to participate tonight has to have checked in with the registrars. You need to have one of these. So anytime we have a standing count, you'll need to show that. So make sure you have your voting card. If you haven't registered yet and you are a voter, you've got to get out there and register and get your card. So a couple of announcements before we get started. One, there's coffee out in the lobby, courtesy of the Friends of the South Howard Meeting House, so please partake of that. Secondly, there's no smoking whatsoever, not only in here, but anywhere in the building at all. Absolutely no smoking. I'd ask you to turn off any cell phones or pages you have, obviously accepting emergency personnel. And we have a screen here this evening for hearing impaired. I'd encourage you to move up close and we'll try and keep a running transcript of the meeting for you so that you can participate in the meeting fully. The rules of procedure here at Howard's Town Meeting are printed in your warrant booklet. The motion chart is in there, which is part of our bylaws. It tells you all the motions that are in order to Howard's Town Meeting and the quantum of vote necessary to pass them, whether they're debatable and so forth. I will be using that, as I'm required to do under the bylaws. And our bylaws provide for anything that we haven't anticipated in our motion chart. We look to town meeting time as our source, and so town meeting time will be the source to give us the answer if there's something that isn't covered in our local bylaws that are there in the chart and our individual rules of procedure. All motions need to be in writing. We have main motions up here, and I'll talk about those in a minute. But if you plan on making a motion to amend an article, keep in mind it needs to be in writing. And if you are recognized for that purpose, you need to bring it forward. Obviously, we need to keep a record of it, and the town clerk, who is charged with keeping a record of all the proceedings of the meeting, will end up with a copy of that motion. When you're recognized, if I don't recognize you by name, please introduce yourself. There are three microphones on the floor, one in the middle and one on either side. But you're more than welcome to come up here, if you'd like, and use the microphone to my right when addressing the meeting. Again, when you get to that microphone, please introduce yourself. The process we follow is that on each article, I will read the article, except those that are of a length that I will not read them. And just to give you a heads up, I will not be reading in their entirety the following articles that I anticipate getting to tonight. Article four, which is the budget, which is in the appendix of the warrant. Appendix B is the annual budget. And there is a column in there marked "Town Meeting," and that's the line that is important that we will be voting on this evening. So if you haven't seen that, I'd encourage you to take a look at Appendix B of the budget. The capital plan, Article eight, that's printed in your warrant, multiple pages, is the plan, and I will not be reading that in its entirety. Article 13, a sewer use bylaw. Again, I won't read that one in its entirety. Article 37 is a temporary zoning moratorium proposed for retail sale of marijuana in town. I won't read that one in entirety. In Article 38, some various amendments to the Home Rule Charter. And I won't be reading that one in its entirety either. So if you're interested in any of those, I'd encourage you to, as well as the other articles, obviously, take a look before we get there. But once I read the article, I will then recognize the chairman or a member of the Finance Committee, and this is pursuant to our town bylaw, who, if they have a positive recommendation, will make the main motion. If they do not have a positive recommendation to make on the article, then I'll look to the floor and see if anyone wants to make a positive article, a positive motion, excuse me. And if they don't, then I will turn to the chair or another member of the Finance Committee, and they will move indefinite postponement. And that process will be followed on each article as we go through the warrant. So with that, I want to recognize Anita Dusette, Town Clerk, to read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Harwich Annual Town Meeting, May 1st, 2017, Barnstable County. To either of the constables of the Town of Harwich and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Community Center Gymnasium, 100 Oak Street, in said town on May 1st, 2017, at 7:00 PM, then and there, to act on the following articles. Thereof fail not to make return of the warrant with your doings thereon at the time and the place of said meeting given under our hands as 27th day of March, 2017. Signed, Michael D. McCaskill, Chairman; Peter S. Hughes, Vice Chairman; Julie E. Kavanaugh, Clerk; Janelle M. Brown, Board of Selectmen; a true copy attested, David Robinson, Constable. April 12th, 2017. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Harwich qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Community Center, 100 Oak Street, in the said town on Monday, the first day of May, 2017, at the time and the place for the purpose herein named by posting up attested copies thereon in the four post office buildings and in the town hall in the Town of Harwich, which covers all four precincts at least 14 days before the time of said meeting, as within directed, and causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, published in Barnstable County, and having its circulation in the Town of Harwich. Signed, David Robinson, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Dusette. We'll now move to Article one, to choose various town officers and committees. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
It's a move in second that Article one be accepted and adopted. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Moderator hereby makes the following appointments. I appoint Mr. Lee Culver to a three-year term on the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Committee. I appoint Paul V. Doane to a three-year term as a trustee of the Caleb Chase Trust Fund. And I appoint Raymond Chesley, the Building Commissioner, to a three-year term as a surveyor of wood and lumber. And I reserve the right to make all other appointments at a later time. Article two, to hear all reports of town officers and committees for the year of 2017. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
It's a move in second and that Article two be accepted and adopted. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I'll now recognize Mr. Brown, Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the Finance Committee's report. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. As the moderator of court said, my name is Jack Brown, and I am currently Chair of the Finance Committee. Please allow me to introduce the other members of the committee. In alphabetical order, there are Mark Amerez, Tranda, Larry Ballantyne, John Torrey, Dana DeCosta, Noreen Donahue, Lori Gillespie Lee, Rich Larios, and Ed McManus. As former Finance Chair Dana DeCosta said last year, in recent years, we have had tremendous financial challenges to meet, and we have met them. Today's reality is that Harwich continues to face significant challenges for the coming year and well beyond. Unlike last year, we saw $4 million in free cash, which, among other things, allowed us to put $1.7 million into the stabilization fund. Today, we have a budget request which puts no monies into that fund, and only able to put $53,000 into the Benefits Trust Fund, known as OPED. Efforts to continue to move us from a AA+ to a AAA rating, an important hurdle to clear for lower interest rates on our future bond offerings are well underway. The budget process has been tightened up, money being returned, forcing as much as possible debt to come from the budget, not from added debt, and so on. And so the efforts are continuing. This becomes important as we finance the tremendous debt burden over the next many years. Shortly, I'm going to go through the major requests for FY '18. Thus, I'll give you a one point in time of these larger requests, and hopefully keep them in mind as we progress to making decisions about the rest of the articles. Just for headline, that $60 million after we voted in doesn't go away, all right? Keep it in mind. Tonight, we'll discuss and vote on the town operating budget request of $33.7 million. The Monomoy Regional School District assessment requests of $24.8 million. And the Cape Cod Technical Regional School District assessment requests of $1.5 million. Together, these four items alone total to $60 million I mentioned. But in addition, we'll be considering several other significant dollar requests, among which are $4.1 million from the Water Enterprise Fund to fund the Water Department budget. $9 million for Phase Two of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, which I'll call hereafter CWMP. Phase Two includes $6.8 million to purchase sewer capacity from Chatham and design the connection of the Pleasant Bay Sewer System. And $2.3 million to design the Chatham Interconnector Systems. Another component of the CWMP, or which $2 million is requested, is the Gold Brook Design Construct and Implement Efforts. It should be noted that next year, we are quite likely to see a further $2.2 million requested for tie-in, excuse me, tie-in costs to the Chatham System, and $20.3 million for Pleasant Bay South Watershed Collection System Construction. Further, $310,000 is requested to fund plans and bid documents for Station Two renovations. You may have noticed I'm having a voice problem. I'll do the best I can. Further funding of Station Two renovations of $4 million is expected to be requested this time next year for construction effort. Another request is for $3 million to reconstruct the Sacatacana Marina Landside Property. Finally, we're being asked to approve $1.2 million for reconstruction of the Cranbury Valley Golf Course Card Barn, Maintenance Storage Facility, and other operations infrastructure. An added point, the capital plan we will vote on shortly has over $84 million in identified capital projects over this and the next six years. And it is front-loaded, but $55 million is to be funded this year and next. Further, the Cape Cod Technical Regional School District will soon be requesting a replacement of that school in total. This is currently projected at $142 million as an initial estimate, and believe it or not, it could actually be less. All 12 districts will be assessed based on the percentage of students from their community attending the school. Spending a lot under Prop. 2.5 for FY '18 is about $65 million or 23.5 cents per thousand assessed value. Selectmen and the Finance Committee are recommending nearly $85 million, given the spending requests and the debt. The Firepumper Capex Detention Funding of $420,000 will if approved at 8.7 cents per thousand. Depending on the terms and interest on the debt items, $16.2 million per year, we will see over 18 cents per thousand. Now, we're looking at over 50 cents per thousand for debt fund requests at this year's meeting. In sum, we have a series of significant fiscal challenges over the next several years. We will need to work carefully, thoughtfully, creatively, and diligently to meet those challenges. The Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator will need to provide strong, unified leadership from the first day of fiscal '19 budget process. And frankly, we all may have to say no, because some requests we were normally okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And before I get to Article three, no matter how many years I do this checklist, sometimes I leave something out. At the beginning of the meeting, we normally start with a pledge of allegiance, and I had skipped by it, and I shouldn't have. So I'd like you to join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag now. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Article three, everybody needed a stretch anyway, didn't they? See if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the elected officials of the town for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending July 30th, 2018, as follows, and to act fully thereon. Selectmen, five, $1,500 each; moderators, $300; Town Clerk, $76,905; Water Commissioners, three, $500 each. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as follows. Selectmen, five of them, at $1,500 each; moderator, $300; Town Clerk, $76,905; Water Commissioners, of which there are three, $500 each.
Motion's made in second. It's exactly the same as the article. Any debate? Mr. Kukonas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to ask a quick question to our town administrator. I know the answer, but I'd like to hear the, I'd like to have him express it to the floor tonight. After we vote all the articles here this today, can you tell us roughly what you believe is going to be left in the raise and appropriate funds that would be available?
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Less than $5,000.
Okay, thank you. The reason why I asked for that is because I wanted the town meeting floor to know that it'll be my intentions to work diligently with the selectmen this coming year to actually increase the selectmen's salary for the FY '19 budget. I cannot and do not feel comfortable doing it here this evening, because as you just heard, we only have about $5,000 left. And the correct funding that I would use for this, could use free cash, but I don't believe that that's a right area to use something like that. But I guess I would just like to rise today and give the floor a little warning that I would like to see the salaries raised to about $5,000 to $5,500 each for each selectman. That's not unreasonable. That would be, you could just roughly figure that it's $100 a meeting, there's 52 weeks a year, and there's an awful lot of work that these selectmen do in preparation for the meeting. As you just heard in the lengthy presentation from the Finance Committee, not only do we have a $60 million budget, but we're looking at millions of dollars of expenditures and things that are going to really take a lot of the selectmen's time as they look forward in the best interest for us. So I will not be amending it this evening, but I would like to take this opportunity to let and have the floor think about it so that when they get it in front of them next year, there won't be a lot of debate about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kukonas. Any further debate on the motion under Article three? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article four, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be required to defray town charges for fiscal year 2018 and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Moderator, I move to take out of order Article 36, so it could be considered prior to Article four.
Okay, so rather than moving Article four, what Mr. Brown has done is move Article 36 in the warrant prior to Article four. Article 36, if you turn in your warrant booklets, you'll see it is for the creation of the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. It's a special fund under the general laws, and as I understand it, in speaking with council before the meeting, PEG, which I think stands for Public Education Government Access Channel, this special fund needs to be created before the motion on the budget so that that fund can be in existence when we give you the budget motion. So a bit of a technicality, we do have a process by which you can take an article out of order, and so I think the amendment is properly before the meeting. Is there any debate on taking Article 36 at this time? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for Article 36? Oh, excuse me. Do I have a motion to allow Article 36 to be considered at this time? Any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of considering Article 36 at this time, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Okay, so we'll now consider Article 36 out of order. And do you have a motion on Article 36, Mr. Brown?
I move to accept General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53-F and 3/4, which establishes a special revenue fund known as PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access devices and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement, the fund to begin operation for fiscal 2018.
Okay, the motion under Article 36 is to accept General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53-F and 3/4, which establishes the special revenue fund known as that PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That allows us to now get back to Article four, the budget. Have a motion on Article four. Mr. Ballantyne.
Thank you. I'm helping Jack with his voice issue. I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that the sum of $33,665,441 be appropriated for the purposes listed in Appendix B under the column entitled Town Meeting Budget Fiscal Year 2018 with the following adjustments. Town accounting, salarying wages, negative $6,500. Streetlights, negative $5,000. Board of Health expenses, negative $4,000. Police, safety wages, salarying wages, negative $5,000. Audit, negative $5,000. The CEV expense to $5,000. The total adjustment is therefore negative $20,500. The total town less line items for unappropriates state, $254,386. Commission, $211,064. $211,604 in county, $197,368 assessment. And further, to raise this appropriation, the sum of $32,438,614 be raised and appropriated. And that $81,130 be transferred from free cash, and that $650,078 be raised and appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, and that $143,417 be transferred from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, and that $252,002 be transferred from the Betterment and Septic Funds, and that $100,000 be transferred from overlay surplus, and that $13,508 be transferred from the FEMA Fund, and $1131 be transferred from the Harbor Capital Fund. Further, to adjust the adapted, adopted budget, $100,000 out of group health insurance and to the other post-employment benefits trust fund created under Article eight of the May 6, 2014 spatial town meeting presented by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Before I go to debate on the budget, and remember, we're considering the budget under Appendix B in your warrant under the column Town Meeting Budget 2018, I'm going to go to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. McCaskill, because our Home Rule Charter requires that the selectmen present the budget to the town meeting. So we're going to go to Mr. McCaskill first. Mr. McCaskill.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, we would like to thank the residents of Harwich who are here this evening to consider the important issues that we as a community face together. Your participation is essential to the democratic process. The Board of Selectmen represents you, the residents, and the needs of the community as a whole. This evening, we will be presenting you with 55 articles in the annual town meeting and two articles in the special town meeting. Before you tonight are many important questions and requests that represent the future of Harwich. We know that as a board, we are asking a lot of our residents, particularly in the financial capital. But we would not ask if these projects were not critical to the protection of our resources and infrastructure. Town administration, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen have listened to the proponents of the articles, and after careful consideration, we bring this request to you, the voters, understanding that you must make difficult decisions in how you spend your hard-earned money. Among these articles are the town operating budget, Monomoy Regional School District, and Cape Cod Technical High Schools budgets, as well as the Water Department's Enterprise Fund. The town budget stands at $33,665,441, which is a 1.4 percent increase over fiscal '17, and overall maintains level services to our community with limited expansion, except where increased services are primarily supported by fees. The Monomoy School budget request is $24,759,749. Though the regional school budget is up 4.34 percent, the school committee has worked to keep the increase within reason. Cape Technical High School's budget request for our enrollment share is $1,487,362, which is a 3.5 percent increase over fiscal '17. The total combined town and school operating budgets of just shy of $60 million stay within the board's guidelines to provide quality services to our residents without the need for operational overrides. We are also pleased to report that free cash has been certified at $1,984,792, which allows us to make some key capital purchases, including replacing older Essential DPW fleet vehicles, funding of the facility maintenance and repair fund projects, coverage of the snow and ice deficit, and continued investment into OPED. The overall financial health of the town has improved over this last year and will assist both our rating and bond capacity as we tackle some of the larger capital projects. We would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our department heads and employees, Chris Clark, our town administrator, and his dedicated staff who support the board, and especially the many committee members and volunteers without whose time and commitment the town could not achieve so many of our collective goals. At this time, I would like to recognize two members of the Board of Selectmen who have contributed a combined 24 years of service to the town, Angelo Lamatia and Peter Hughes. Personally, I thank them for the instruction and guidance that they have provided me and for the opportunity to work with them on the board. The Town of Harwich is grateful for their commitment, their knowledge, and their dedication. Finally, and of great importance, the wastewater committee, the Board of Selectmen, and its engineering team have worked diligently for years on the challenge of wastewater and how to move forward in the most fiscally responsible way to solve this problem with the least impact to our residents. We cannot avoid this issue. It is not going to go away, and it is incumbent upon us as a town to create the solution that is best for Harwich, which we feel is before you tonight. We ask you to put your trust in the board that you elected, and in return, we promise to be faithful custodians of your hard-earned money and the town's resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCaskill. So we're now back to the debate on the main motion that was made under the budget, and it's being moved as listed under Appendix B in all respects with a couple of exceptions and it's being moved as listed under Appendix B in all respects, with a couple of exceptions, and I'm just going to point those out again since they're not in the warrant article themselves. There were five line items being reduced: Town Accountant salary and wages by $6,500, streetlights by $5,000, Board of Health expenses by $4,000, police salary and wages by $5,000, and audit by $5,000, and one being increased, CEV, there must be electrical expenses, and that is raised $5,000, so it's level funded. So, those line items were adjusted $20,500. And then there were three deducts: the unappropriated state line of $254,386, the commission of $211,604, and county, $197,368. That got us to the budget number of $33,665,441 that you're being asked to appropriate in this motion. So, debate on the budget. I don't see any, so we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 5. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be required to pay for the Montemoy Regional School District Assessment for fiscal year 2018 and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and the town raise and appropriate $24,584,057 with additional said sum of $175,692 to be transferred from free cash for a portion of capital items to the Montemoy Regional School District Budget for fiscal year 2018. Total budget request being $24,759,749.
Okay, the motion under Article 5 is if the article be accept and adopted, raise and appropriate, the number is $24,584,057, with an additional sum of $175,692 to be transferred from free cash for a portion of the capital items to the Montemoy Regional School District Budget for fiscal year 2018. Any debate on the motion for the Montemoy budget? Yes, sir.
Charles Gruska, 6 T. Berry Ave. A question to determine the adequacy of the budget. How does the proposed budget compare percentage-wise with the net school spending figures of the foundation budget required by the Education Reform Act? We know that that figure has been determined to be $1 to $2 billion statewide deficient because of healthcare costs and health benefits, excuse me, special education. So, many communities are funding several percentage points above net school spending. Just curious as to how this proposed budget compares percentage-wise with the requirement for the district to fund education for the upcoming year.
Anyone want to take a stab at that? I see Mr. Widdigren, no? Is there somebody from the administration here? Mr. Carpenter, a non-voter, but our superintendent. I assume there's no objection to hearing from Mr. Carpenter.
I don't know the percentage above we are, but the school district is above the net school spending.
Okay, thank you. So, we do exceed that. Any further debate? Looks like you're set to vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 6. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money as may be required to pay for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Assessment for fiscal year 2018 and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,487,362 to pay its assessed share of the Cape Cod Technical Regional School District Budget for fiscal year 2018.
Motion's been made under Article 6. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $1,487,362 to pay the town's assessed share of the Cape Cod Regional Technical School Budget for fiscal '18. Any debate? Ms. Kakounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a concern about the Cape Cod Regional Technical Schools' construction that's going to be planned for, I believe we're going to be having a special town meeting sometime in August or September. Is there anyone that could maybe just quickly brief the crowd here this evening? I know it's not directly related to the budget.
Yeah, it's really not related to their budget, Mr. Kakounis. I really don't want to get off on another project.
Okay, could I ask about if I can through you, then? If that actual construction plan should be on the capital plan, or shall I wait till the capital plan comes up and not wait?
Why don't we wait till the capital plan?
Thank you, sir.
Any further debate? This is on the operating budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical School District. Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Water budget. Article 7. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be required to defray Water Department operating budget for fiscal 2018 and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $4,126,595 to $4,000 be raised and appropriated from Water Department receipts to operate the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose. Salaries, $1,231,067. Expenses, $1,374,434. Debt, $820,915. Indirect costs, $650,178. OPEB, $50,000. Total, $4,126,594.
Okay, the motion under Article 7, accept and adopt. The sum is $4,126,594 to be raised and appropriated from the Water Department receipts to operate the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose. And since it's not in your warrant, let me just read them again so they're broken out. The salaries, $1,231,067. The expenses, $1,374,434. Debt, $820,915. Indirect costs, $650,178. And OPEB, $50,000. The total again, $4,126,594. Debate on the Water Department budget. Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Brings us to the capital plan, Article 8. See if the town will vote to adopt the capital plan for the ensuing seven-year period as adopted last year by town meeting with the new fiscal year 2024, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and set forth below or as amended by vote of the town meeting and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
It's been moved and seconded that the plan be accepted and adopted, and I see you moving towards the microphone, Mr. Kakounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, I'll go back to my original question on the tech school and seeing that in fact we do know that the tech school is going to be coming forward asking for our share of what I understand is about a $140 million construction project, why that hasn't been at least addressed in the capital plan?
Mr. Arios.
Rich Larios, Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. That would be affecting the assets of Cape Cod Tech, not ours, so we'd be affected on the operating budget side. We wouldn't reflect that type of expense. Where our capital plan has those expenses, those expenditures that deal with our assets.
So, the answer, Mr. Kakounis, is as I hear it, it's not included since it's not deemed to be an asset of the town.
Okay, thank you. I don't buy it, but thank you. I mean, the whole idea of the capital plan, if I may, is to, and I was a member, just so the audience that may not know me, I was a member of the original capital plan and part of the committee that brought it together so that this town adopted and used the capital plan.
It would be in the budget, the seven-year budget, affecting the seven-year budget of the town, not the capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm done, but I'm not done with my comments.
Right. Before you go to your second comment, I just want to say that I see a lot of people standing in the back. There's a lot of empty chairs in the first three rows on this side and more empty chairs over here. Then if you're looking for a seat tied to standing back, there's plenty of seats up here. I invite you to come up. Kind of reminds me of church here with all the first few pods are all empty and come on up. Thank you. Mr. Kakounis.
Thank you. On the capital plan, there are two shaded columns. One says Town Administrator, Capital Outlay Committee, I assume it's Recommendations, REC, and then next to it is FY '18. The action that's happening here this evening, which actual line are we voting? Are we going to be voting adopting the FY '18 line, or are we adopting the TACOC recommendation line?
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen line in the capital outlay is the one that we would be adopting at this meeting.
So, the first one, the one that says TACOC Rec?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I won't get into, there are some differences from what was, I guess, recommended under the FY '18 and what is being recommended now, but I kind of assume what the reasons are. The only thing that I would say is I'm going to rise this evening, and I'm not going to support the capital plan. And the reason why I'm not going to support the capital plan is because I'm a huge, very strong advocate of the capital planning procedure. In the old days, when town of Howard took on the capital planning procedure, we would vote the FY '18, '19, '20, '21, and '22 years, and then all we would be doing this evening is adding the fifth year, '24, for a simple majority vote. If you wanted to change anything in those 18 to 22 years, it required a two-thirds majority vote of this body to change that. That's a true capital plan. That's where you are having people look at what we're spending, the effects it is to our tax rate, and it's also good planning because it's very difficult to get a two-thirds majority vote to change those things that we have on the plan. Some time ago, the town of Howard and this body decided not to drop that requirement. So, basically now, as far as I'm concerned, all we have is an eight-by-eleven sheet of paper with a lot of numbers written on it. Because what has happened even here this evening, there's been a number of projects which have jumped ahead, others, or which has moved forward just by a simple majority of this board, voting what they think is a capital plan that has some weight to it. And I would really like to see the town go back to its original intent on why we adopted the capital planning process. And I humbly disagree with a gentleman from the Finance Committee. The purpose of the capital plan is not to reflect our assets. The purpose of the capital plan is to stabilize our tax spending so that people would work on the projects that are coming forward and spread them out so our taxes would stay the same. That would be the perfect capital plan. As the school comes off, we would be replacing it with other debt. In the old days, we used to say when the fire department comes off, we're going to replace it with another project and capital debt. When the police department came off and we paid that mortgage down, we would replace it. What does that action do? That action stabilizes our taxation and our spending. What Howard has been doing in the last three years is the exact opposite. Last year, I stood before you and I asked you not to vote for the capital plan because they had snuck in an $800,000 expenditure for the West Howard School. There was no talk about it, it wasn't on the plan for five years, it was just snuck right in. This evening, we're going to be voting on projects, one of them that's going to be going into the Downey property. We only purchased the Downey property in 2014. How could it possibly be on the capital plan for five years? Good capital planning is what stabilizes tax expenditures. And quite frankly, I don't know what voting this capital plan down will do, but I just think it's basically a waste of time. I think that we should do away with the Capital Outlay Committee, and we should do away with this whole planning process because it means nothing. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 8. Mr. McManus.
Because the issue was raised just as a point of information on the Cape Cod Tech School, the approval of that project will be submitted to the voters of the entire district, all 12 towns, on October 24th this fall. There is not a special town meeting held in each town to approve the project. It is only done at that ballot issue.
Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt the capital plan? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
It is a vote.
At this point, I've been asked to make a presentation for a new member of the Howard Hall of Fame. It's for Mr. Pete Watson. Many of you probably remember Pete. I think his wife is here this evening. Is Mrs. Watson here? Could you just stand up, Mrs. Watson? Thanks, thanks so much. Let me just read this to you. It's not too long, and we usually read these Hall of Fame announcements. Arthur Watson, or Pete, as he was known, was born on March 16, 1933. He and his family lived in Linfield, Mass., and he worked for BFI Waste Management as Vice President of Marketing. It was here that Pete first became active in municipal government. He was a member of the Boston Chamber of Commerce and was the Chairman of the Catholic Charities of the North Shore. Watson's had a longtime summer home in Howardport. In 1995, Pete and the family moved to Howardport full-time, and in 2000, he retired from BFI. This allowed Pete the opportunity to get involved and spend more time with the Howard community and life here on Cape Cod. Pete was an active voice in the town's operation of several municipal departments, such as Cranberry Valley Golf Course, Department of Public Works. He sat on the Finance Committee and became Chair. Under his watchful eye, he had a study of the cost of insurance to the town, which resulted in significant savings to the town. As a member of the Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee, he sought to develop a comprehensive seven-year capital budget and debt service process to understand when new expenditures made sense. Pete was a steady, predictable, tough old bird and a staunch defender of the Howard taxpayers. Under his committee leadership and personal concern for town resources, he allowed himself to always listen to reason and take the time to think through things before coming to any conclusion. Once one got to know Pete, you knew he had a warm heart and a great sense of humor. He served Howard very proudly with a determination to do things right. Cambridge Latin High School has a quote under his graduation photo. Whenever things are calm and quiet, in comes Pete and causes a riot. Pete Watson. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to fund the items in the table below and further to authorize the selectmen to accept grant monies related to these items and chess compression equipment of which matching funds were authorized in the 2016 annual town meeting and grants related to the police department bulletproof vests and act fully thereon by request of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that $116,819 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 9 is accept and adopt. The sum is $116,819 for the purposes set forth in the article. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 10. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow a sufficient sum of money as may be required to defray costs related to facility maintenance and repair for FY '18 and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that $774,156 be transferred from free cash and $33,130 be transferred from water retained earnings for a total appropriation of $808,086 for this purpose.
Motion under Article 10 is accept and adopt. The sum of $774,156 is to be transferred from free cash and $33,930 to be transferred from water retained earnings. Total appropriation, $808,086. Is there any debate? Yes, sir.
My name is Dean Heterstet. I think most of you know who I am.
I think most of you know who I am. I have an issue. The issue has got to do with the middle school operation. First of all, I want to applaud the Board of Selectmen for finally coming up with a budget and for the Department of Public Works to work on the budget. But you know, we've kicked that can down the road regarding this school for so many years. The can has got so many lumps in it, you can't check it anymore. You really can't. So in order to help make a decision regarding this school, we've done this part of it, which is great. We have a budget of $125,000 for the repair and maintenance and repair of the school. But there's something missing. You know what's missing? Where is the income? That's the other part of this equation. Where is the revenue? What department is responsible for managing and reporting on that revenue? Can anybody answer that question, please?
Mr. Clark. Question, line item number six in this article is middle school operations, $125,000. He's asking, is there any revenue?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Two things. The 125 is from free cash to kind of continue to maintain the building. We do have a separate article that is designed to create a funding source. I'm just looking up the...
I think it's Article 46?
Article 46 is establish a middle school revolving fund. So as we create a artist colony, if you would, and as we get revenue, that money would be put into a fund that can then be used to do additional maintenance and maintain the building at a higher level.
I understand that. My question is, where is the funding now? Who's taking care of it? Who's managing it? Are we going to wait till another year before we understand what the real numbers are? Or do we have a forecast for numbers?
The Board of Selectmen approved a, through you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen approved a two-year plan to fill the building and to have it be used as an artist colony. We are segmenting that money off to see how much we can generate, which will then lead us to a longer-term plan. In terms of your direct question about who operates that building, the DPW actually maintains the building through our Facility Maintenance Director and the vacancy or the occupancy of it is done through the Community Center Director. So we have two people and then as the administrator, ultimately, I'm responsible for the building as a town asset.
But we don't have a budget yet for the income.
No, we don't. It's still in a transition phase.
Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 10? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article 11. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow some of money to implement a portion of Phase 2 of the Town of Howard Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certificate dated May 13, 2016, consisting of the payment to the Town of Chatham of the capacity purchase fee pursuant to an intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Howard and the Town of Chatham, which permits the Town of Howard to deliver wastewater to the Town of Chatham Water Pollution Control Facility for treatment and design of sewers in the Pleasant Bay watershed and design the Chatham Interconnector System as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including any land acquisition costs and all of the costs incidental and related thereto, provided that any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be contingent upon the passage of a Prop 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote. Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $9,035,000 to implement Phase 2 of the Town of Howard Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certified dated May 13, 2016, consisting of the payment to the Town of Chatham of the capacity purchase fee pursuant to the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Howard and the Town of Chatham, which permits the Town of Howard to deliver wastewater to Chatham Water Pollution Control Facility for treatment and disposal, all as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan and for the design of the sewers in the Pleasant Bay watershed and design of the Chatham Interconnection System as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including any land acquisition costs and all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of $9,035,000 pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and Chapter 29(c) or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore provided, however, that this vote shall be contingent on the passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payments of the cost of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you, Mr. DeCosta. The motion under Article 11, and I'm not going to read the whole motion again, it's consistent with the article. It seeks to borrow $9,035,000 and it is subject to a debt exclusion vote. So it will require a two-thirds majority to pass once we come to a vote. Debate on the motion. Mr. Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Good evening again. Let me first start by acknowledging and thanking the Wastewater Implementation Committee, who's worked many hours to put together the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan and deserves all our credit. I first wanted to start just by briefly discussing what we're about. What's the general objectives of Article 11 and the CWMP? It's to reduce nitrogen in Pleasant Bay to acceptable levels to improve water quality, establish wastewater systems to maintain water quality in the future, protect our drinking water wells, and avoid potential costly lawsuits and much more costly implementation and potentially loss of local control. And going forward in a plan of this type, it allows for initial infrastructure to be constructed and results monitoring program phases adopted or altered as needed to improve results or to save money. The Phase 2 that we're voting on tonight, its goals are to analyze the Pleasant Bay watershed properties to determine the optimum collection system and connection for each individual property, refine the collection system costs, to further explore funding options, and probably as important as anything, is to continue gaining public input as we move ahead. As we've said before, just very briefly, the estimated cost, it totals at over $9 million, of which, though under $7 million, is the purchase sewer capacity in Chatham that Mr. Peter will talk about in a bit. And though over $2 million to design the sewer system. Remind you again that this is getting everything in place if this goes forward. Probably next year, we'll vote for a low under $23 million to actually do the construction. As you have read and will be discussed in more detail tonight, there are many positive reasons, I think, to move ahead with the CWMP. But I think it's also, and I've been reluctant to do this because we want to always keep it on a positive note, I think it's important to consider what could happen if we do not move forward with this plan. And just go through some points on this. In accordance with the Conservation Law Foundation lawsuit with the Environmental Protection Agency, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection designated the Cape Cod Commission to prepare an update to the 1978 Water Quality Management Plan to address degradation in Cape Cod's water resources from excessive nutrients, primarily focused on nitrogen. The EPA also stated that the Mass DEP must designate water management agencies with the power to fund and carry out the Water Quality Management Plan. The EPA will, as this moves forward, EPA has the assignment of assessing actions and to notify us if additional actions are necessary. And further, the court was so kind to state that they're watching us. I guess they do that occasionally. To be sure that the progress is being made and results are forthcoming. If we're found lacking in not moving ahead in an acceptable manner, the court and regulatory agencies are likely to shorten our CWMP 40-year implementation plan, which for us is negative because it removes some of our chances to adopt to new technology, to buy open safes if you want to, and to, as someone, I think, it might be Mr. Kukunas, it lessens our chance to tie in the next phases of the plan with our Capital Outlay Plan. So we can hopefully stabilize debt structure going forward in this long endeavor. The DEP has indicated that our progress to improve our water resources do not live up to expectations. They can revise the Title V Septic Regulations to require each homeowner in a nitrogen-sensitive watershed, which all ours are, by the way, to install individual nitrogen-removing systems, which could cost us, as homeowners, triple what it would cost us to do the recommended townwide plan. The DEP, DPA, DEP could require the formation of water pollution abatement districts. Each district would be an independent legal entity administered by a district commission to address water quality problems. The main point of this is, if this were to happen, it would move control from the town, from Howard, to district-wide control. And I would guess that personally, but that's the final point. That's what I have, just to try to get not only the positive of cleaning the water, which is the purpose of this, but what some of the negative impacts could be if we do not move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. I have Mr. Hughes and then Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My list of thank yous is a little bit more extensive than Larry had. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of those who have been involved in the development of our wastewater management plan over the last decade, spent 10 years or more. The list includes the Wastewater Implementation Committee, the Pleasant Bay Alliance, the Water Commission as its superintendent, the Capital Outlay Committee, the Finance Committee, Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and my fellow selectmen. If I left anybody off, I apologize. But in particular, I'd like to thank and recognize Mr. Frank Sampson, who initiated the topic of wastewater over 10 years ago. And many of you remember Frank would be up here year after year after year, requesting bits and drabs of funding, if you will, to get water sampling done and that type of thing, to move this plan along. So he was, in my mind, the true pioneer for the Town of Howard in this area. Now I'd like to take a few moments and walk you through what wastewater is all about, if you will, and how we got to where we are this evening. Wastewater consists of the solids captured in our septic systems and the liquid outflow from our septic leaching fields. I think most of you realize we have that nice white plastic PVC pipe in our basements that goes out through the foundation and somewhere. The somewhere it goes is into our septic systems. In most cases, those are Title V septic systems. In Howard, wastewater flows by gravity down to the groundwater and falls it into our harbors, estuaries, and freshwater ponds. In Howard, we have five distinct watersheds which collect wastewater from any source within it, which are funneled to its outlet. And the key components of wastewater, which are detrimental to water resources, are the nutrients nitrogen and phosphorus. Approximately 85% of the controllable nitrogen in our watersheds comes from septic systems with fertilizers and stormwater runoff equally accounting for the remaining 15%. And although it is important to minimize the impact of fertilizers and runoff, they alone will not sufficiently reduce nitrogen to solve our water quality problem. We need to focus our efforts on human waste and solutions other than Title V septic systems. A Title V septic system is effective at reducing nitrogen by approximately 10 to 20%, which is insufficient to meet our needs. A central treatment facility, such as the Chatham Wastewater Treatment Facility, removes approximately 90% of the nitrogen that is in its affluent recharge, significantly improves water quality. Howard has been in this wastewater business for more than a decade. You have invested approximately $1 million in water sampling, watershed modeling, and engineering to identify feasible solutions to our wastewater problem. In conjunction with Chatham and the state of Massachusetts, Howard has spent approximately $1 million of your tax dollars, $1 million of your tax dollars, to expand the opening of Muddy Creek and replace the small culverts with a bridge on Route 28 at Pleasant Bay. We did that just about a year ago. We opened that up, which has significantly improved the flushing of Muddy Creek, which by all estimates reduced the need to sewer a couple hundred homes in the Pleasant Bay area. In Howard, we have developed the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, CWMP, for those that appreciate acronyms, which identifies and details our plan to improve water quality over the course of the next four decades. This isn't something we do overnight. The plan focuses on the five watersheds in Howard and has estimated the cost approximately $200 million over that period of time. Our CWMP has completed the regulatory process with the approvals from Mass DEP and the Cape Cod Commission. We got those approvals in the course of the last year. The plan is flexible to allow for the introduction of appropriate new technologies and to take advantage of opportunities associated with regional approaches to solve the problem and hopefully lower the cost. By moving forward on a multi-phase effort, Howard will be able to control its own destiny. Failure to keep moving forward on the plan may result in state changes to Title V regulations, Title V septic regulations, which would place a significant burden on each homeowner living in one of our five watersheds to add enhanced treatment to their existing Title V septic systems at a much higher cost. We could also be subject to court-imposed solutions and schedules, which would likely result in an accelerated implementation and more costly solution. Just so you know, our CWMP identifies the need to sewer approximately 50% of the properties in Howard once it is fully implemented. So this isn't a complete townwide sewer system. It's about 50% of the properties. As I mentioned, the opening of Muddy Creek is an improvement to the Pleasant Bay watershed, but does not alleviate the need for sewer-ing additional areas in that watershed. There is an identified need to reduce septic sets of nitrogen in the Pleasant Bay watershed by 65%. When you look at the watershed maps, you will notice that the Pleasant Bay watershed is geographically separate from our four other watersheds. If you look in Howard, it's located in the northeast corner of the town, if you will. In the trade-offs developing the plan, a standalone treatment facility with associated recharge area was considered as a viable option for the Pleasant Bay watershed. Those of us who have been involved in the development of CWMP know that a neighbor to the east, Chatham, made a decision several years ago to solve its wastewater problem by sewer-ing the entire town. Off of Samurai Road, behind their transfer station, they designed and constructed a treatment facility with a capacity of 1.3 million gallons per day. It's basically off of 137, if you go behind the Commerce Park, that's where this facility is located. Surely, do we hold up there? That's what it looks like. The Chatham facility began operating in 2012 and Chatham has been working to install their collection system ever since. It takes a long time to install a collection system, which is brought online in phases. At this time, the Chatham facility is processing approximately 200,000 gallons a day of septic. Sensing that the Chatham Treatment Facility had excess capacity, Howard's Selectmen, Town Administrator, and your Wastewater Implementation, excuse me, Implementation Committee reached out to see if Chatham had an interest in accepting and treating a maximum of 300,000 gallons of wastewater per day from the east Howard Pleasant Bay watershed. Chatham was receptive to the concept and thus began a 20-month period of exploring the potential and developing what's called an intermunicipal agreement. It was very clear at the initiation of our negotiations that Chatham was only interested in the Howard area, which affects Pleasant Bay watershed. We were successful in including in the document or the agreement the Great Sand Lakes area during Phase 8, we're talking about Phase 2 right now, of our plan... during Phase Eight, we're talking about Phase Two right now, of our plan, if needed, and as long as we stay within the three-hundred gallon-per-day limitation of the IMA. In exchange for the use of up to three-hundred gallons per day of the capacity of the Chatham facility, Harwich will pay six-point-seven-six-five million dollars in capital costs, spread over four payments based upon a schedule of events, either flow, quantities, or time. In addition, we will pay our fair share of operation and maintenance expenses based upon our portion of the flow into the plant. Recharge of the effluent will take place at the Chatham Treatment Facility and less than until Mass DEP would determine that the effluent flow to Kakul Cove in Chatham exceeds nitrogen loading levels. Neither side expects this scenario to happen. However, there are provisions in the IMA to deal with this topic. The IMA also includes a schedule for the return of capital to Harwich if for some unforeseen reason, Chatham no longer takes our wastewater. There is also a significant notification period before any change in the IMA can occur. The alternative, quite frankly, is to site and build a treatment facility in East Harwich at an estimated cost of between twelve and fifteen million dollars, which would most likely require about ten acres in each Harwich to locate such a plant. There are no zoning changes proposed as part of this wastewater plan. The flow projections associated with Pleasant Bay watershed are based on what could be built on a lot today if was connected to a Title V septic system. At this moment, both Boards of Selectmen, Harwich and Chatham, have approved the IMA, and the IMA is on both town meeting warrants. If we approve the IMA this evening, Chatham will vote at its town meeting on May ninth, and then we will need to approve the ballot question for funding on May sixteenth. Technically, the Chatham Board of Selection could adopt the IMA without town meeting approval, however, they elected to put it in the IMA, or, excuse me, put the IMA on their warrant. Harwich continues to look for less costly ways to remove nitrogen in our groundwater, and as part of the Phase One portion of the plan, you funded a study of the culvert system off of Bank Street. Most of the land through which culvert flows is owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust. The study found promising results, and we are in discussions with the trust to design and implement a plan that meets the ecological restoration and nitrogen removal goals. This natural means of nitrogen removal could also offset the need to sewer additional homes in the future. You should also know that the CWMP calls for a treatment facility of approximately one million gallons per day located at the Harwich DPW site off of Queen Anne Road. According to the plan, this facility would be constructed about ten years from now. This facility would treat wastewater from the balance of the town's collection system, including Herring River, Allen's Harbor, Witchmere Harbor, and Sarkatacket Harbor watersheds. In the last nine months, the Board of Selectmen have held three joint sessions, which represented us from the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth, to explore the interest in a three-town treatment facility, which should be located in Dennis, at the site of their transfer station, so about a Tony Kent Arena. These discussions are ongoing, and a successful would eliminate the need for Harwich to build its own treatment facility at the DPW site. And quite frankly, in the end, if we're successful with Chatham and also with Dennis and Yarmouth, there may be no treatment facility in Harwich, only pipes, pumps, and valves associated with a collection system. Article XI seeks approval and funding to execute the intermunicipal agreement with Chatham, designing interconnection with the Chatham Treatment Facility and design the sewer collection system for approximately six-hundred properties in the Pleasant Bay watershed. If approved and funded, we expect to bring to the 2018 town meeting a request for construction. During the design phase, we will better define the characteristics of household connections to the system and aggressively explore and define potential funding sources and mechanisms to alleviate the burden of connection costs. These sources could include low-cost loans and/or veteran program, which will recover the cost through the individual real estate tax adjustments spread over a twenty-year period of time. The timing and scheduling of the design and construction phases are such that the first flow of sewage to the Chatham facility would be expected in 2021. These things take a long time. Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to embark on a lengthy, complicated, and expensive, yet necessary, solution to our wastewater challenges. Our tourist and recreational-driven economy depends on water quality. We also need to protect our valuable drinking water wells. We encourage you to support these wastewater-related articles and keep us on track to address our wastewater needs. The Selectmen and members of the Finance Committee, as well as members of the Wastewater Implementation Committee, don't enjoy paying taxes any more than the rest of us. However, they realize the importance of these wastewater articles and unanimously recommend approval by you. Thank you for attention, and we look forward for an interesting discussion.
Mr. Howell, further debate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I stand here to fundamentally support the request with one major caveat. I too was a member of the Water Quality Management Task Force in 2000, before I was a selectman during the 2000s. I understand there's been a lot of effort put into this, and it's commendable. Many people at the front table have been involved with it. Many people in this audience have been involved with it through committee structure through the years. There's been a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen that's been dealing with Chatham. All of this has been methodically worked out. However, as a former member of the Planning Board and its vice chair, I can assure you the zoning is not the entire part of the picture. We also have a Drinking Water Resource Protection District there for a zone of contribution for well, mostly for Chatham, actually. My concern is that as we do this, and we still have time to do this, our focus remains on the fact that the Drinking Water Resource Protection District, not the zoning, has been the governing issue of growth in that area. And what happens because of that is when a person comes in as a proponent, if they are not prepared to put in an active remediation system, they are limited to fifteen percent of lot coverage. So it became an economic issue that naturally attenuated growth in that area. As we move forward with this, I want to assure the town, and I want to make sure that the Selectmen are focused on the fact that we need to create a mechanism of some sort to replace that, so that we're not, we're all going to be paying for this, and we're all going to be paying for this for many years. I've got a nine-year-old at home that my wife and I are raising, and she's going to be paying for this. When we do it, it should be to fix that which we have broken, and it should not be an inadvertent opportunity for somebody to come in and build something that we never contemplated. We all have experienced that moment of, who let that happen? And I want to make sure, because I've said this at town meetings now for the past four years relative to the capital plan, I just want to make sure we spend the next year wisely not only negotiating contracts with Chatham and going into Phase Three, but making sure that we have an ironclad way of controlling unfettered growth. If we want that growth, it should be in front of town meeting through the front door, not through the back window. But again, I'm supporting this particular article, and I urge you to also.
Further debate on the motion under Article XI. Mrs. Corbett.
First of all, I'm entirely appreciative of the specificity of the presentations, which range beyond my understanding in many ways. But I have a basic curiosity. As I remember, we have a projected build-out figure for Harwich down the road, so that we know what our population limits could be. And I wonder if in this plan, whether there is compatibility in terms of associating with Chatham and possibly Dennis, whether there is compatibility in assessment of the build-out so that when we talk about forty years, that there really is a solid basis to that kind of a projection.
Anybody want to try and respond to that question from Mrs. Corbett? Is the plan tied at all to the build-out plan for Harwich? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's my understanding that because it's a forty-year projection, they didn't just look at what exists today, but what could exist with existing zoning. So they did take into account natural growth with the existing zoning.
I think she just said, did it include Dennis and Chatham in that?
Yeah, no, I'll take it.
Mr. Lamontia, looks like he's...
It does not include Chatham, Chatham or Dennis or Yarmouth. They have to cover their own zoning and their own build-out. In the documents that we have on the agreement, what we say is that what we will cover is what can be built now on Yarmouth, on Harwich property, the zoning for Harwich, the current zoning. So if you have a lot that you can build a two-bedroom house on, and it's, and we put the sewer in, and you can still build a two-bedroom house, you can't increase it. So it's the same number. Now, we probably will be reducing the number because as we buy conservation land and as we look at property that we don't have to build on, we can remove that from the total. But if anybody wants to change the build-out, they have to come before this organization right here. Thank you.
Further debate. Carol Ridley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and town meeting. My name is Carol Ridley. I'm coordinator of the Pleasant Bay Alliance and also a resident of East Harwich. And I stand before you this evening in strong support of this article and to urge you to support it as well. Pleasant Bay is a beautiful body of water, but it is definitely in trouble, primarily from nitrogen loading from our septic systems. This plan will take care of Harwich's share of responsibility for removing excessive nitrogen. So Harwich's share is about twenty-five percent of the problem. This plan is very comprehensive and fully addresses that responsibility. It's also very forward-looking. I mean, Harwich has taken a number of leadership steps in addressing water quality problems in Pleasant Bay through the work with Chatham and the Muddy Creek Bridge. That was an important start, but we knew that would not be enough to solve the problem, even though, as was noted, it substantially reduces the amount of searing that's going to be needed. So this is really an opportunity to, again, take advantage of our ability to work with a neighboring town to solve a problem that will benefit not only us who enjoy living and enjoying the waters of Cape Cod, but also our generations to come. So I strongly urge you to support this article. The longer we wait, the more expensive the problem will be, the more difficult the water quality problem will be to solve. So now is our opportunity. I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this plan, and again, urge you to support it. Thank you.
Further debate. Yes, ma'am.
Bobby McDonald, Harwich Port. You say that the fertilizer, reducing fertilizer use, will not solve the problem, and I agree. But reducing fertilizer use on lawns will solve part of the problem, and it costs nothing. And when I first moved to Harwich, I started working on the Water Quality Committee with Mr. Sampson. And there was, from that time on, I was kind of hoping that there would be some emphasis on stopping the incredibly green velvet lawns that we see around town, and that has not been done. And I feel like, in addition to doing all this work, people in town might be willing to do something that costs them nothing, which is to stop using the amount of fertilizer that they put on their lawns, which is actually five or six times more than the lawn needs. And all that extra nitrogen goes right through our sandy soil down to our water supply. So it would cost nothing to use less fertilizer. And this is something that other towns have already done, and they have reduced the amount of nitrogen by ten or fifteen percent. So I think it's something that is worth a try. I think people here can read the ingredients on the products that they use and find something that contains less nitrogen very easily, or use nothing at all and go back to what we used to call a Cape Cod lawn. Thank you.
Further debate. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Steve Perella, 222 Palo, Harwich. I don't want to pay any more taxes than I'm paying now. I don't want the Massachusetts DEP telling me what to do with my sewage system. I was wondering, instead of spending tens of millions on this plan, would it be better for us taxpayers to fight them? Would it be less costly to fight them? It appears they're the ones that are originating this problem. I don't know anybody, myself included, that wants to do this. So would it be better to fight than to just pay to do all of this?
Further debate. Yes, ma'am.
Linda Solomon. I just wanted to clarify the zoning thing again. So this plan is not going to add any more possible building. I'm just worried about it enabling more lots to be able to be built upon. Because right now, you have to have a certain amount of land between a septic system and a well and that kind of thing. And I'm just worried that it's going to make more buildable lots. Is this so or not?
There's no zoning proposed in this article. That's all I can tell you. There's no zoning change proposed. So is your question if, and this just deals with East Harwich, and the IMA with Chatham, and then the plans for building the collection system for East Harwich Pleasant Bay, is your question, as I understand it, by doing this, are we making lots buildable to any greater extent than they are now? Is that your question?
That's right.
Mr. Lamontia.
That's not what the plan is. The plan is to keep it with the current building level.
Okay, thank you.
I was getting up not to answer that, but...
Yes, you're recognized, Mr. Lamontia.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I have a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection. It's about four pages long. And the problem with trying to fight them is they have the right to make the definition of what the Title V system has to do. That's one of the things they can do. And all they have to do is add to the current set of regulations and permitting issues the fact that you have to start taking nitrogen out. A Title V system doesn't cover nitrogen. If they were to do that, the calculation was that you'd be paying three times more than what we're planning on doing with the sewer. It's a very expensive piece, so I don't know about fighting them. I have no idea what and when they would do something like this. I do know that every time there's been a meeting and a question was asked, and one of their representatives were there, they would tell you that that was one of the things they were going to do. And this document was sent to Chris Clark, just so we had it in writing. So they're serious about it, is the only thing I can say.
Further debate. I've got a gentleman right here in the middle.
Okay, thank you. Gary Conroy, 235 Bay Road. This is a little over fifty million dollars, I believe, in capital request. And did we cover the average cost to the typical homeowner in Harwich on an annual basis?
When you say this is, this article is nine million. Are you talking about all the articles?
No, I'm talking about, yeah, Article XI. It outlines about fifty million dollars in capital expenditure over the next couple of years.
Right. But tonight, just so the voters are aware, you're voting on nine million thirty-five thousand.
And what's the nine, what does the nine million cost, the average homeowner in Harwich? And what does the $9 million cost the average homeowner in Harwich?
Yeah. Do you want to respond to that question?
Yeah. It's been a bit since I did the $9 million. If you look at the $30 million, that would be for Phase Two this year in construction. The average house in Harwich is $350,000. And the annual tax rate for that $30 million, 20-year loan would be in a range of $160 a year.
How about the $9 million?
$9 million is, boy, it's been a bit. I think it's about $45 for the average home for the...
That's for a home of $350,000.
$350,000.
About $45 a year.
So a little under, right.
For the average home of $350,000. For this $9 million, sir.
Right, right. Over X amount of years.
That's correct.
Right. So just one other thing, as I go through all the budgets and the data that you guys provided, was that I think with the ballooning capital requests that are going to be before us over the next X amount of years, not just this $30 million or $50 million, but as you continue on this endeavor, how does the town become more prioritized in the way they ask for money? And what is the function of the town from an expenditure standpoint? So, you know, just from my standpoint, you know, we've got $500,000 for the pet cemetery on one of your documents, another $125,000 for the middle school that I thought we had voted a year or two ago that we wanted to sell that property. Now it's, oh, we're going to keep it and make an artist colony out of it. And then, oh, by the way, I heard a $9 million number just to get that building up to, you know, survivorship, so to speak. But my point more is, you know, how do we prioritize ourselves and focus our money so that it's not all over the place and we're spending money in a prioritized way? Thank you.
This gentleman over here.
Lentonis, 35 Cottonwood. I'm not from around here. I grew up in New Jersey. New Jersey sewered our town in the '70s, '80s, and '90s. And if you know anything about New Jersey and watch the economic reports about New Jersey, it's in big trouble. People are leaving the state in droves because of property taxes. So these kind of projects, over a long period of time, these kind of numbers, these are like federal government type of numbers that we're looking at here. I've never heard these kind of numbers in a small town thrown out before. This is insane. So if you want to see your taxes on a $350,000 house go from $2,000 to $3,000 a year to $6,000, $8,000, $10,000 a year, let's do it. Let's go for it. But I don't want to pay for it. I don't. I can't afford to pay for it. I've got four kids. If you're also going to tell me that I can't put an extra bedroom in my house, if I do have sewers that I'm paying for, that doesn't sit well with me either. So the $160 a year that you're talking about, that it's going to cost each of us homeowners, there ain't no way that it's 160. No way. Because you're not talking about what it's going to cost to maintain the sewers on a daily basis, the equipment the sewer department's going to have to buy, salaries, pensions, health care, buildings, all this extra stuff. I don't know how this little town can afford it. And the other thing that is constantly in the newspaper and that the selectmen are talking about is affordable housing. How on earth do you do a sewer project of this size and this amount of money and then talk about, "We need to have affordable housing and better, more affordable places for young people to live"? You can't do it.
Any further debate? This gentleman over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeffrey Hadley, Scotland Way, East Harwich. I'd just like to say that I am against the comprehensive wastewater management plan. To me, the cost is unreasonable. Practically speaking, I don't see that the benefit from this plan could be anywhere close to ridiculous costs it imposes on the people of our town. You know, in terms of, you know, people will throw out, they're worried about tourism being affected by the way, you know, by the water, the supposed lack of water quality. And I just don't see that as a problem anytime soon personally, in terms of the tourism. I think, and so I would just like to urge the people to vote against this article. And I'd also like to voice my strong support for the previous speakers and the points they have made speaking against this article. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the middle.
Good evening. My name is Mike Abdal, commercial fisherman in Chatham. I live in Harwich. When I first moved here in '88, there was a lot of people flushing toilets from Orleans, Harwich, and Chatham into Pleasant Bay. As they started to remedy the situation, the nitrogen count started to drop a little bit. You now have a bigger issue, which I discussed with the scientists in Pleasant Bay, with the seal population, that now poops way more in that place than all the people flushing toilets in the three towns. So they told, well, whatever. They told me that 60% of the nitrogen level comes from these animals. In the wintertime, we have 30,000 to 50,000 that live from the Tippecanoe Pass past Chatham Harbor. In the summer, we have roughly 500 to 1,000 that'll stay there year-round inside the harbor because they have a couple of sharks outside that are trying to make lunch out of them. When they pee and poop, excuse my terms, people, they roughly pee between a gallon and two a day and poop between five and 15 pounds a day per animal. So as you've now taken and put in Title V units and stopped the human flushing, which has helped the bay, you now have a bigger issue, which is increasing every single year and will continue to increase because by law, they're protected. I'm not saying what they have to do to them, but whatever. You also have a golf course up there, right on Pleasant Bay, and they throw a lot of fertilizer, lime, and whatever to keep those greens looking pretty for them people who come down and spend $100, $200 a day golfing. So it isn't just the people who are creating this problem. Right now, it looks like 10% fertilizer, 30% people, and 60% wild animals. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am?
Patty Watson from West Harwich. And Cape Cod is a special place, and Harwich is a special place. But it's not unique in its need for affordable housing, homelessness, substance use issues, the aging population. Harwich is not unique in dealing with these issues. However, Cape Cod is unique in that it has a sole source aquifer. So when you poison your own water table that you're drinking, all these other issues are put into perspective. So I strongly support us investing in our future in water quality. Thanks.
Further debate. Mr. Kukounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A gentleman got up a little while ago and asked a question or said he would rather fight this. And I thought maybe somebody from the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee would address that statement. I'm just wanting to give you a little bit of education on this, just as you move forward in your decision this evening. The DEP did not come down here on their own and force these new regulations that are being talked about this evening. The DEP, along with the communities here in Boswell County, were sued by the Conservation Law Foundation, a separate group of lawyers, that that's what they do across the country. If any of you have been around here in Massachusetts long enough, you may remember the lawsuit by the Conservation Law Foundation to clean up the Charles River. And the reason why the Charles River was cleaned up was because of that direct lawsuit. So basically, what happened was, and I'm going to put this in real simple farmer-layman terms for you, so I already apologize if I say the wrong technical word. But basically, what the Law Foundation said is they sued the state because they felt that the state was not forcing you, the homeowner, to have a better control of your nitrogen loading through your Title V septic system. And what happened was, when the state, to fight that lawsuit, they turned around and put pressure on Boswell County. Boswell County, through the Cape Cod Commission, hired an environmental lawyer. We fought it for you, the homeowners, because quite frankly, it was said that you guys are the ones, the people who own the septic systems are really going to be the end of people paying or polluting, if you will, according to the Conservation Law Foundation. You guys are the ones that are responsible for your septic systems. So what the county did is, through the Cape Cod Commission, we formulated and agreed with the DEP and the Conservation Law Foundation to upgrade the 208 plan. Their argument is that this 208 plan has been sitting on the shelf for years and nothing is being done. So the Conservation Law Foundation simply said, "Either do something or we're going to sue every single homeowner on Cape Cod." So to circumvent that, again, we put together the lawsuit or answered to their lawsuit, upgraded the 208 plan, and that's why we're here today. So if, how you vote this one way or another, I'm not sure where I'm going on it, to be honest with you. But I do believe that you need to have some of that information. If we do nothing here, I guarantee you, though, the Conservation Law Foundation is going to bring that lawsuit back. And they are going to direct it to the homeowners because you guys are the ones that own the septic system, not the town of Harwich. Today, right now, you own your Title V septic system. So subsequently, they may sue you through the town of Harwich, but basically, you're going to end up responsible to do something on your property, to make sure that your septic system, your Title V septic system, is not putting nitrogen into the groundwater. So I just wanted to give you that little bit of information.
Further debate on the motion under Article 11. Just so everybody's aware, the motion was positive. It was for $9,035,000. It's proposed to be borrowed, and it's subject to a debt exclusion ballot question on the ballot. Further debate. Mr. Hadley.
Just like to clear up, get some clarity on one point that might be a source of ambiguity for a lot of people, including myself to a certain degree. My understanding, when it comes to drinking water, is that the drinking water in this town, by and large, is excellent. And the amount of nitrogen that supposedly starts to cause an issue in freshwater bodies and also in saltwater bodies is much lower than the amount of nitrogen that causes any hazardous, any hazards to humans. So I'd just be curious if anybody would be able to comment on that. My understanding, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, is that this is not about drinking water quality because drinking water is very good in this town. Just tell me if I'm wrong.
So does somebody want to address the question of the quality of drinking water? And then I've got, I think it's Ms. Underwood, who's been waiting to speak. But Mr. Thompson, if you want to address just the question of the drinking water, and then we'll get to Ms. Underwood.
Yes. There is a problem with drinking water in the East Harwich wells, Wells 8 and 9 currently show a 2.5 pints per liter in nitrate loading. 10 is the limit. And sometime around late '90s, it started to appear. And at what point it could take off and we have to shut the well down and go to a different type of treatment? You're going to spend millions one way or the other. And there is no seals in the drinking water wells.
Ms. Underwood.
Hi, thank you. My name's Judith Underwood. I'm from Harwich Center. And I sit on the Cape Cod Chamber-sponsored Regional Wastewater Task Force. And I also teach environmental technology and management at the community college. And first, I want to make three points. First, thank you to all the committees and the engineers that worked on this plan. It's a lot of work. I mean, a lot of work. Maybe some of you have read the four-page or the 10-page, but has, how many of you, and raise your hand, have read the big, thick, one-inch report? All right, so there's a few of us? Okay, very good. So that was a lot of work. I know this is something that just hasn't come up overnight. I do want to make some clarifications as an educator, with all due respect to our farmer. So the number 208 actually refers to a section of the Clean Water Act, which President Nixon put into place back in the 1970s. And under that act, citizens throughout the country and communities throughout the country are supposed to keep their water clean to a certain extent because in the '40s, '50s, and '60s, we had been poisoning the water. Okay? Do you all remember Silent Spring, that book? That's where this all stems from. There was an awakening in this country. And President Nixon, who is on one side of the aisle, as you all know, came forward and said, "You know, we need to protect our water. It's essential for every single person." Unless somebody in here can survive without clean water, I don't think so. So back in the late '70s, the county did an estimation of the situation here. And for the amount of development back in the late '70s, we had a sufficient cleansing system of our wastewater and our drinking water. So can I just see a show of hands of how many of you have moved here since, like, 1978? Okay. So maybe we should just all leave? I don't know. I don't think so, right? Communities grow. Our community has grown. And in the late '70s, as a choice, probably about management of growth here on Cape Cod, we chose not to take the federal dollars that New Jersey did and New York did to sewer this area. That was a choice that we made. Those dollars are no longer here, so we have to, and this is actually, if you figure it out dollar by dollar, it's a very low cost. We need it. It's, we are polluting our embainments, and the drinking water is the biggest issue. We are a single-source aquifer, which means everything eventually gets down to one piece of water. Once that's gone, we're in trouble. You know, we think of other communities around the world having water issues. We are very close to having a water issue here in Cape Cod. This is one way to solve it. The only thing that I would add is, I just would ask that in the next round of the feasibility studies, we do not only the LIDAR, that if those of you that read the big book know about the LIDAR studies, we do do the engineering studies for where the best part in town is for the affluent. But really, I commend you all. You guys, you have no idea how much work this took. So I strongly support you to move ahead, to vote positive on this. This is going to allow the next round of engineering, the next round of discovery, and we have to do this. We just do. There is nothing that, right now, in the technology field, there are no cost-effective devices that you can put on your septic system to cut that nitrogen. There may be five years from now, and that's okay. But five years from now, we still need to do what they're already going to start doing. So please, I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Further debate. Julie Kavanaugh, Selectman Kavanaugh.
Good evening. There's been many, obviously, important issues raised tonight by many of you, and we take them seriously. But I ask you to keep in mind that some of those issues about taxes increasing, you may have to worry about your overall value of your property decreasing if we don't do something about our water issues. So that's one thing to consider. On top of that, many of us have, you know, transplanted down here to live in this fabulous place, which obviously environmentally is a lot of the reason we live here. Well, overall, many of us also lived through the MWRA, which Mr. Kukounis mentioned about cleaning up the Charles River and Boston Harbor. So I ask you to seriously consider this article tonight because doing nothing's not an option. We've already been advised of that. We have a letter to prove it. And having lived through the MWRA and those costs, we don't want to be imposed upon us that kind of restriction and to be told how we'll go about this. So that's another issue that you all should think very carefully about. In addition... In addition, if we don't do anything, and we have to, individual homeowners put in fast systems, the overall cost that you're paying out of your pocket to do a sewer system is peanuts compared to what you will pay for a fast system, which is a more advanced septic system that you then have to pay for every year for monitoring. So it's not only the cost of your septic system, it's the cost of that monitoring as well. And again, to the point that we are not in charge of the septic system, that is the state, and they tell us how it goes about. And any of you who have sold a home and had to bring your septic up to compliance, it's no joke. So I ask you to keep that in mind as well. In addition to that, to Judy's point, we have lost out on the ability to get federal funds to help us do these projects, because we waited too long. So now, if we don't do anything, these systems just go up in cost. They don't go down. So if we don't do anything now, what are we going to be paying in 10 or 20 years? We don't even have that option, because we're going to be forced by the Conservation Law Foundation, by the feds, to address this issue, and then it will no longer be on our terms. I also ask you to keep in mind that the seal issue, I understand, and I get that that's a, you know, complicated issue as well. But keep in mind that houses that are on the ocean, they're not the only, you know, they're the ones that won't be searing, because as we discussed, everything is going down into the soil and leaching out. Well, if you have a house on the water, the ocean's taking care of that. It's the rest that are having, those nitrogen levels are seeping in and leaching out towards those waters. So keep in mind that it's not just the seals. The other thing I just want you to understand too, is that the longer we wait, we don't get that option of the lower interest rate on some of these projects. And so we're losing out again by continuously delaying. So I just ask you that all of these things are very important issues. It's been well discussed how much time and energy has gone into this long before I've been on the board. So I ask you to consider how much work has gone into this, how much serious consideration of the tax dollars. None of us wants to pay more. But if we don't do something now, we'll be told how to do it, and we'll be paying a lot more. Thank you.
This gentleman over here is next.
Dave Reyer, 73 Church Street. I was down in New Jersey for 18 or 19 years. The cost of our sewers were about 1/10 of our tax bill, 10%. The taxes were driven by other town costs and really the school system. That was the bulk of the cost down there. And I agree with what these other speakers, they kind of stole some of my points. If this is turned down tonight, we're, as taxpayers, still going to spend money. It's probably going to cost us a lot more, because this issue is not going away. The state's not going to let it go away, nor is the Law Foundation, as Mr. Kukunis pointed out, going to let it go away. And the last point, I worked for chemical companies for 29 years. If we ever pollute the aquifer, once you pollute groundwater, the technology does not exist unpolluted. It's, our property values will plummet. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. I urge support for this motion.
There's a gentleman standing behind you. Yes.
Val Peter, Partridge Lane. We need to go through with this. It's a big, it's a big-ticket item, I understand that. At full disclosure, I oversee the operation of Chatham Water and Sewer. That facility that you saw operate, I have an interest in it. I'm very proud of the product that I produce. This town needs to be seared. We've dodged the bullet long enough. If we don't do this, we will be told what to do, and that is not a good position to be in. 1987, Chatham was faced with the ACO Administrative Consent Order. And part of that order stated, "Chatham, you will do X, Y, and Z. And if you don't do that, you could get fined up to $10,000 a day." Now, do we have your attention? Chatham said, "Yep, we definitely got our attention." Chatham's is probably going to be $220, $250 million after everything's said and done. We are in the process of extending the sewer as we speak. I encourage everyone in this room on May 13th to come to the wastewater plant where we have our annual open house. Take a look at the technology. Take a look at how we treat the waste. Please, don't be foolish, don't be short-sighted, don't be afraid of this big-ticket item. It is expensive, it needs to be done. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the middle here.
Alan Peterson, East Harwich. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Okay. So a motion's been made to move the question and been seconded. It's a motion to terminate debate. It's non-debatable, requires a 3/4 majority to pass. So I'll first take a voice vote on it. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 11 so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
If I don't get unanimous vote, because it's 3/4, I can't call it, then I'll have to take a standing count. So we'll try one more time. All those in favor of terminating debate so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now go to the main motion. I'm going to just remind you what it is. It's to accept and adopt Article 11. The sum is $9 million, $35,000 to implement Phase 2. It's one phase, Phase 2 of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, and the IMA with Chatham. It's proposed to be borrowed. It's also subject to a debt exclusion vote, so that's a ballot question. So you'll be asked to, if this passes, you'll be asked to consider this at the ballot box as well as this evening. So all those in favor of the motion is red, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule that it got the necessary 2/3 majority, and it passes. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to implement a portion of Phase 2 of the Town of Harwich Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certificate dated May 13, 2016, consisting of the design, construction, and implementation of the Coldbrook Project, as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including any land acquisition cost and all other costs incidental and related thereto, providing that any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be contingent on the passage of a pro two-and-a-half debt exclusion vote. Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. I moved that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2 million to implement Phase 2 of the Town of Harwich Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certified dated May 13, 2016, consisting of the design, construction, and implementation of the Coldbrook Project. All as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including any land acquisition costs and all other costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of $2 million pursuant to the general laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and Chapter 29(c) or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, provided however that this vote shall be contingent on the passage of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion vote. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of the said bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded under Article 12. It parrots the article. It's for $2 million. It's proposed to be borrowed, and it is also subject to a two-and-a-half debt exclusion ballot question vote. Debate on the motion. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hopefully, I'll be briefer than the motion was. During the development...
I'm going to hold you to that, Peter.
Okay. During the development of the Harwich Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, an area in the Sacotucket watershed known as Coldbrook, was identified as a potential means to improve nitrogen removal from the nitrogen-sensitive watershed. You have the slide that shows Coldbrook? Coldbrook runs from sideways, doesn't run that way, but it runs from grassy pond, it's a stream that runs down.
There it is.
There it is. It runs from grassy pond on the left, winds its way down to Sacotucket Harbor. Okay? Just so you know. The Massachusetts Estuary Project Study during the development of the CWMP monitored that area and found that 35% of the nitrogen in the groundwater was removed in that area. However, most freshwater ponds in Harwich removed at least 50% of that nitrogen. So it was recommended to further evaluate this area, which is owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust, to see if options existed to increase nitrogen removal to more than 50%, which would potentially offset the need to sewer approximately 200 homes. The town funded the recommended study in Phase 1 of the CWMP Implementation Program, and positive results were found as documented in that report posted on the town's website. The money requested in this article, $2 million, will be utilized to work with the Harwich Conservation Trust and their designers to develop a detailed design that achieves the goals of the town for more nitrogen removal and of the Harwich Conservation Trust, which is to enhance wildlife habitat, improve water quality, and enhance passive recreation opportunities. The trust is working closely with the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration and U.S. Fish and Wildlife to develop a process-based restoration plan, which brings the area back to pre-Cranberry Bog days. Both of those agencies have done similar projects in Plymouth. A few meetings have been held to discuss how to mesh options to achieve both parties' goals. The groundwater levels would not be raised in the area, and no water from other areas in town would be imported to this site. Discussions have been positive to date. A potential restoration plan may include some open water features created by excavating existing soils to create a pond-type feature exposing the groundwater table, rerouting the flow control channels around the former Cranberry Bog to create a more meandering stream through the site, removal of non-native trees, adding nature trails and restoring wetlands are some of the options being considered for implementation. Once a plan is developed, working with the Harwich Conservation Trust, we will work to implement the construction of the joint solution. We appreciate your interest in this article. Was I short?
You were. Any further debate on the motion under Article 12? Mrs. Corbett.
Just a point of information. When we vote for a design study, are these accepted on a bid basis, or how is a party certified to conduct the study? How do we know that we are getting not only the capacity, the capability, but also the best price for that endeavor?
Anybody want to answer Mrs. Corbett's question? Basically, what is the designer selection procedure? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. In terms of the designer selection, we can actually select the best design firm that we recommend, you know, that we would recommend. In terms of the actual construction, this is a little bit different, because it's on a private site. Any public funds used to do public improvements would have to go through a competitive bid process. So the big dollars in this is the construction-related, and that would have to follow the procurement law.
Further debate on the motion under Article 12. Yes, in the middle.
Calla Burke, 200 Bank Street. Last month, a group of neighbors, that, Bank Street neighbors, met with Mike Locke from the Harwich Conservation Trust. We had concerns. One of the main concerns we have is the chance, the possibility, and he did state there was a possibility, that the water table could rise with this project or be rechanneled, the water could be rechanneled. And the possibility exists that a number of homes, and there are, I think, at least 50 homes that abut this property, they could possibly be experiencing some basement flooding or other types of damage from this. He said to ask at the meeting tonight, what will the town do to ensure that that will not happen? And if they can't ensure that it won't happen, what will the town do? What kind of mitigation mechanism will be put in place to protect our homes? So if somebody could answer that, please.
Anybody want to take a shot at answering this question? I see Michael Locke has risen. He's the executive director of the Harwich Conservation Trust. Mike is obviously well-known here in Harwich, but he actually lives in Brewster, and we have a bylaw that requires consent to have a non-voter speak. Any objection to Mr. Locke answering this woman's question? Hearing none, Mr. Locke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just by way of answering Ms. Burke's question, I'm just going to give a brief introduction about the Harwich Conservation Trust, for those of you who are not familiar with the background of the nonprofit. So the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust was established in 1988 by volunteer citizens joining together as a board of trustees to preserve land that protects wildlife habitat, water resources, walking trail, scenic views, and many other environmental elements that contribute to the quality of life in Harwich. Harwich Conservation Trust acquired the 60-plus-acre Coldbrook site of retired Cranberry Boggs in 2001. And the site is now called the Robert F. Smith Coldbrook Preserve in honor of Robert Smith, founding trustee and Harwich Conservation Trust president for 27 years. The trust has partnered with the town on many successful land preservation projects, supported by you town meeting voters over the years. In this case, the town and trust partnership centers on the ecological restoration of wetland, stream, and open water features that can have the co-benefit of reducing nitrogen and therefore improve the water quality of both Coldbrook on-site and Sacotucket Harbor downstream. The trust's Board of Trustees supports the town selectmen's goal of reducing nitrogen to create cleaner coastal waters in Harwich, and supports this Article Number 12, recognizing that there are many details still to be worked out, and that this important article addresses one part of a complex plan whose critical goal is the preservation of our water quality. Now, to answer Ms. Burke's question, I first want to give some background on the meeting that took place on April 17th, at the request of Ms. Burke and her fellow homeowners along Bank Street. Naturally, the concern that she expressed was reflected by some of her neighbors as well, that any change in the Coldbrook site owned by Harwich Conservation Trust of interest by the town in a joint effort with our Eco-Restoration Project to reduce nitrogen before it reaches Sacotucket Harbor, if there would be any change in hydrology that might raise water tables and affect basements. I think it's important to note, just for a resource for people here, that on the trust website, harwichconservationtrust.org, we have an extensive list of project questions and answers developed in concert with the state's Division of Ecological Restoration, which is our primary project partner in our ecological restoration effort. Question 16 on that nine-page PDF dated March 22nd is, "Will my basement be flooded? What will happen if my basement floods after construction is complete?" Here is the answer. It is our clear intention to avoid any design that has the potential to flood basements or low-lying neighboring properties. Based upon what we know now, we have no reason to believe that the proposed restoration actions will increase basement flooding. To help assess that issue, in 2012, the project team installed monitoring wells within the bog itself and several neighboring properties to understand how groundwater fluctuates and moves. Initial observations suggest that flooding will not be an issue. As we move through the design process, we will continue to explore the potential for flooding within basements and low-lying areas adjacent to the preserve, and will adjust the design as necessary to avoid such an occurrence. Keep in mind, while the design intends to liberate groundwater, the water surface elevation will, in most cases, remain the same. We are simply allowing groundwater to express itself at or We are simply allowing groundwater to express itself at or near the surface. The project team invites input from adjacent property owners. If you are currently having basement flooding issues or have had flooding issues in the past, please bring that information forward to our attention so we can assess your situation and plan accordingly. Now, one of the ways that the water table is expressed at the surface is by removing the sand layer that has been applied to the original wetland surface for over a century by the past agricultural operations. So when that sand layer is removed, you may see more water, but it's actually a reflection of, of the existing groundwater table. That's just one ecological restoration approach we're contemplating. Furthermore, there are a number of decaying water control structures throughout the sixty-plus acre site, which have an impediment effect to the water flow. We will be removing those water control structures, which also, at the moment, create a barrier to fish passage. So we hope to have better water flow and better fish passage as a result. So those are some of the, um, approaches we're taking in this joint effort with the town.
Ms. Burke, you have a follow-up question?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Michael. Um, we did discuss at that meeting the fact that you suggested that we bring this up to, to the town meeting, at town meeting, because there's no, um, there's nothing that's been discussed in terms of a mitigation mechanism, which is the term that you suggested we use. So I'm just bringing it up because should this be an issue, I think it's something that, you know, Michael said, "Bring it up to the town," because if the town votes this, that, that then it might be perhaps the responsibility of the town to mitigate these issues. If we don't pass this, um, when I asked if HCT would, um, follow through with their plan to, for the restoration, and, and he said, "Yes, most likely." And I asked, "What would then HCT do for mitigation?" He said he'd have to get back to us. So I'm just bringing it to the attention of the town because I think, you know, I, I think this plan is, is very good. I'm not saying, "Don't vote for the restoration project." I'm just saying, if it causes problems for homeowner, owners, and we're talking, you know, fifty-plus homeowner that this could affect, um, that let's, in the design and implementation plan, let's discuss this along the way so there's something put in place to mitigate these problems should they occur. Thank you.
Mr. Locke, a follow-up?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just want to thank Ms. Burke and her fellow, uh, homeowners along Bank Street for bringing this, um, set of concerns forward now. I think that, um, uh, to follow up on her question of, uh, um, the working title that we came up in that discussion to, um, address their main concern, which was a quote-unquote "mitigation mechanism," um, that is, uh, something that, um, I did, uh, briefly discuss with Town Administrator Chris Clark, uh, just to, um, uh, raise the issue, as I said I would, to the homeowner group. Um, and, Mr. Clark, I don't know if you wanted to mention, uh, your thought on that as to what the general recourse for any party is who might experience something, um, in any case like this.
Were you rising, Mr. Hughes, on that? Okay. Mr. Hughes, I think is going to address that, Mr. Locke.
Thank you. And I think we've mentioned before, um, the project we did at Muddy Creek, which is, uh, removing some culverts and opening up the, uh, flow channel, if you will, and building a bridge. In the course of that project, there was, if I remember right, there was one household, uh, that was going to have an issue because of the, uh, the water level, if you will, at that point, and the town did participate in remediating for that particular house. So, uh, my point is, we have a history now of, of doing that, and we would expect that if, if we see those issues in the future. Number one, hopefully, the engineering and the design of it will be such that we don't see any issues at all, but if we do, obviously, it's a responsibility that the town has to stand behind.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 12? Hearing none, I'm gonna put it to a vote. Again, the motion is, uh, to accept and adopt, appropriate two million dollars. It's to be borrowed, and it's subject to a debt exclusion ballot question. Uh, since it's a borrowing, it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds majority, and it passed. Uh, just a comment that the town clerk has asked that I bring to your attention. The ballot this year that you're going to see has a, a series of ballot questions. There's actually fifteen, and then a non-binding question after that. But the ballot itself is on two sides, so when you go to the ballot box to vote, uh, this year, um, make sure you turn it over and don't just move to the, what is really page three. There's a page two with a whole series of ballot questions on the back. Article thirteen. amend the code of the Town of Harwich General, uh, Bylaws by adding a new Sewer Use Bylaw, Chapter Two-Ninety-Five. See if the town will vote to add a new Chapter Two-Ninety-Five to the General Bylaws entitled Sewer Use General Bylaw to be added to the Code of the Town of Harwich governing the establishment, construction, and operation of a wastewater collection and treatment system, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
It's moved, seconded, that Article Thirteen be accepted and adopted. Mr. Howell, did you have a, a report on this one?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator. Uh, before, before I do that, can I just ask you to point out to the folks in the audience that we've done some important work already tonight and that anything we already did could be brought up on reconsideration so that they might want to hang around?
Uh, Mr. Howell is simply asking me to, uh, bring to your attention that, uh, any action, uh, taken tonight can be reconsidered up until, uh, we close the meeting tonight. Can't be reconsidered tomorrow night, but anything that we've done tonight can be reconsidered, uh, before we adjourn until tomorrow night. Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the Bylaw Charter Review Committee held a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, for the purpose of soliciting comments as to the form relating to Article Thirteen. No negative comments were received. The proposed language was reviewed by the Bar, Bylaw Charter Review Committee and was found to be consistent with the structure of the town's charter and the code of the Town of Harwich.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. You've got one of those for the clerk? Great. Any further debate on the motion under Article Thirteen? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article fourteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to purchase at least one pumper for the fire department and authorize a trade-in or sale of the nineteen eighty-five Pierce Pumper. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Prop Two and a Half, the amount required to pay for the capital expenditure authorized by this vote and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate sum of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fund one new fire pumper, to further authorize its fire chief to trade-in or sell vehicle to be replaced to offset the purchase price, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from a limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws, C Fifty-Nine, Twenty-One C, Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to meet this appropriation to pay for the fire pumper.
Motion made, seconded, under Article Fourteen. It's accept and adopt. Uh, the sum is four hundred and twenty thousand, uh, to fund the, uh, pumper, and it is subject to a Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Prop Two and a Half, um, debt exclusion vote. Any debate on the article? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Um, it is a borrowing, requires a two-thirds, uh, majority. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It carries by the necessary two-thirds. Article fifteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to hi, hire an architectural firm to develop construction plans and bid documents for the construction renovation of Fire Station Two at one forty-nine Route One Thirty-Seven. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section, uh, Twenty-One C, borrowing authorized under this article. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred and ten thousand dollars to fund plans and big documents for File Station, Fire Station Two renovations. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow three hundred and ten thousand dollars and to issue bonds and notes, therefore pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, that the appropriation and borrowing authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote. Any premium received by the town on the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, thus any such premium applied to the payments of cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount.
Okay, so the motion under Article Fifteen is accept and adopt. It's three hundred and ten thousand, and it's proposed to be borrowed, and it is subject to a Prop Two and a Half debt exclusion vote. Any debate? Mr. Kukunas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Here's a project that's been on the Capitol plan for twenty years. It's a project that is long overdue, all right? It has paid its dues by being pushed off continuously by other projects. This is a station that is in dire need of upgrade. It needs to be modernized because of our now, both having men and women as firefighters and also, uh, EMTs. And it's also a fire station that certainly since my tenure here has gone through a number of different debates. Uh, I remember one time where we actually had to close it down because of funding purposes. I remember one time where we, uh, ended up just having personnel there for, uh, during the day or during the busy hours and during the summer. This is an area in East Harwich that is, um, well-deserving of this station, and, um, the people who man it and the town should really do the right thing today and step up and make this a, uh, state-of-the-art and new facility, which is really needed out there. And by the way, this is not a design of any kind of grandioso nature. This is not a building that's going to reflect the one that we have as our main fire station. This is an auxiliary, smaller, secondary, uh, station, and it's, and it's, uh, it needs to move forward this evening. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article Fifteen? Hearing none, I'm gonna put it to a vote. Again, the motion was for three hundred and ten thousand. It's a borrowing, and it's subject to a two-and-a-half debt exclusion ballot question. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds majority, and it passes. Article Sixteen. See if the town will vote to transfer of forty-three thousand dollars from the Golf Improvement Fund to continue landscape reclamation and tree removal, specifically holes number Three, Five, and Six, but not restricted to other areas that the Golf Director and the Golf Committee deem necessary and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted to supplement ongoing landscape reclamation at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, that the town transfer forty-three thousand dollars from Golf Capital Improvements Receipts Reserve Fund for this purpose.
All right, the motion under Article Sixteen is accept and adopt, uh, and the sum is forty-three thousand dollars. It's proposed to be transferred from Golf Capital Improvement Receipts. Is there any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Seventeen. See if the town will vote to transfer from, transfer the sum of thirty-nine thousand from the Golf Improvement Fund to replace the master controller of the CVGC irrigation system and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted to replace the master controller and related components for the irrigation system at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, that the town transfer thirty-nine thousand dollars from Golf Capital Improvements Receipts Reserve Fund for this purpose.
All right, the motion under Article Seventeen is accept and adopt. The sum is thirty-nine thousand, and it's proposed to be transferred from the Golf Capital Improvements Receipt account. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Eighteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the reconstruction of the CVGC cart barn with a new facility, solar-capable, with the ability to house a state-of-the-art electric golf cart fleet, rescan and re-roof the major existing maintenance storage facility, provide environmental upgrades, and reconfigure the existing car parking lot and lanes, and access to the clubhouse and the pro-shop facilities with appropriate enhancements, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Ballantyne.
I move the town appropriate the sum of one million, two hundred thousand dollars to fund the reconstruction of the CV, Cranberry Valley Golf Course cart barn with a new facility, solar-capable, with the ability to house a state-of-the-art electric cart, golf cart fleet, rescan and re-roof the major existing maintenance storage facility, provide environmental upgrades, and reconfigure the existing car parking lot and lanes, and access to the clubhouse and pro-shop facilities with appropriate enhancements. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow one million, two hundred thousand dollars and to issue bonds and notes, therefore pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, the appropriation and borrowing authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Prop, Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote, provided further that while the entire borrowing authorized by this vote will be a general obligation of the town. It is the intent of the town that the vast majority of the annual payment of principal and interest on the bonds will pay, will be paid from golf receipts. Any premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, shall be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Okay, the motion under Article Eighteen is accept and adopt. It's a one million, two hundred thousand. It's proposed to be borrowed, and it is subject to a Prop Two and a Half debt exclusion ballot question. Debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds majority, and therefore passed. Article Nineteen. See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the remaining balance of funds contained in the following articles funded by free cash. Article Twenty-three, the two thousand and ten annual town meeting, seventy-six hundred dollars. Article Fourteen of the two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and one cent. And Article Thirty-three of the two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Said transfer of funds to be used for the replacement of the Round Cove boat ramp and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town transfer from available funds the remaining balance of funds contained in the following articles funded by free cash. Article Twenty-three of the two thousand and ten annual town meeting, seven thousand six hundred. Article Fourteen of the two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and one penny. And Article Thirty-three of two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents, for a total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. Said transfer of funds to be used for the replacement of the Round Cove boat ramp. Said transfer of funds to be used for the replacement of the Round Cove Boat Ramp.
Second. So moving second on Article Nineteen, that funds as from the various accounts as read and as listed in the article for a total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents be used for the replacement of the Round Cove Boat Ramp. Is there any debate? Yes.
Linda Sibola.
Yes, I'm sorry, didn't see you.
That's all right. Can someone explain to town meeting what Article Fourteen of the two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting was for such that there is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars left in that article and why was it not spent and is it really available?
Anybody want to try and answer?
John Rendall, Harbor Master. That account was left over from the Allen Harbor Bulkhead and Parking Lot Project and a good portion of that was a result of reimbursements from the grant that we got from the state as part of the public access grant.
And so what you're saying is as a result of the grant reimbursement and the project cost, there is indeed a surplus of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and one cent and it is available?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Sibola? Thank you. Any further debate? Hearing none, I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article Twenty, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the construction of Sacquetucket Harbor Landside Renovations to include a new Harbor Master office building, a leased snack shack, six rented seasonal vendor shacks, a boardwalk with viewing areas that overlook the marina, and a passenger boat ticket office area for booths, and a Harbor Master Department Maintenance Facility building on the former Downey property. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect till the town votes to exempt from the limitations on total taxes imposed by Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C., Prop Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal of any interest on any borrowing authorized under this article. Further authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any state, federal, or private grant monies available. Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. I move that the town appropriate the sum of three million dollars to fund the construction of Sacquetucket Harbor Landside Renovations to include a new Harbor Master office building, a leased snack shack, six rented seasonal vendor shacks, a boardwalk with viewing areas that overlook the marina, and a passenger boat ticket office area for booths, and a Harbor Master Department Maintenance Facility building on the former Downey property. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow three million dollars and to issue bonds and notes therefore pursuant to General Laws Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other actions necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided however that the appropriation and the borrowing authorization by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limits, limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law Fifty-Nine, Twenty-One C., Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal of the, principal of and interest in, on the borrowing authorized by this vote, provided further that while the entire borrowing authorized by this vote will be general obligations of the town, it is intent of the town that harbor revenues from rental receipts and proceeds of the sale of the two, of two oh three Bank Street and town-owned adjacent properties be used to fund or reduce principal of the annual payment of principles and interests on the bonds. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote lest any such premiums apply to the payments of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by the, this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty of the General Laws thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
We'll hear a second. Second. So it's been moved and second under Article Twenty to accept and adopt. The sum is three million dollars and it's proposed to be borrowed and it is subject to a Prop Two and a Half Dead Exclusion ballot question. Debate on the motion. Mr. Kukunas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I actually have a amendment to the motion. So should I read it from here or should I bring it up to you? I have it in writing.
Ah, yes, I'd like to see it if you want to bring it.
In the meantime, while I'm walking up there, for those of you that have a warrant in front of you, the motion is just going to be to amend it by removing the language about, say, two or three sentences down consisting from Harbor Master Office Building, Leased Snack Shack, six rental seasonal vendor snacks, a boardwalk with a viewing area that overlooked the marina, and passenger boat ticker office area booths, and a. Basically what it's doing is just leaving the maintenance shed and the former Downey property and I'll bring that up in writing.
Okay. So the amendment looks to me like it's within the scope of the article, so why don't I have you put it on the floor?
Should I read, have to read the whole thing again?
Well, one thing you left out, Mr. Kukunas, as you were at the other microphone, is that you're also seeking to change the sum from three million to one million.
That's correct.
Okay, so I think the voters need to at least hear that part of it.
Okay.
And then the part that you're seeking to delete so that they've got it and then I'll walk.
Again, the part that I'm seeking to delete is just the terms Harbor Master Office Building, a leased snack shack, six rental seasonal vendor shacks, a boardwalk with a viewing area that overlooked the marina, and a passenger boat ticker, ticket office for booths, and a. So the ending motion that actually will be, if this amendment passes, it'll say, I move that the town appropriate, and again, we're changing the sum, from three million to one million dollars to fund the construction of the Sacquetucket Harbor Landside Renovations to include Harbor Master Department's Maintenance Facility building on the former Downey property.
And the rest is the same.
And the rest is basically the same.
Okay.
So I won't bore you with the rest.
Okay, do I hear a second? All right, so we had a main motion on the floor. The main motion was for three million to be borrowed and it was for all of the items listed in Article Twenty. The motion to amend, which has now been moved and seconded, is for one million rather than three million and it only includes the Harbor Master Department Maintenance Facility building on the former Downey property. In all of the respects, it's the same as the main motion. Debate on the amendment. Mr. Kukunas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise before you this evening as what has been termed via an email going around from a town official, an unqualified individual. Basically, I guess the powers that be, the chosen ones, don't want us to have a right to stand up here at town meeting and amend articles. And as you all know, especially people who come here to town meeting, know that you're not going to get me to stop doing that. I don't care how unqualified I am. The problem with this situation.
Well, Mr. Kukunas, let me just make this one point. We're not going to get into personalities. You're absolutely correct. Anyone has the right to make a motion to amend as long as they're a qualified voter and you certainly are that. So your motion is properly on the floor.
Thank you. I made this amendment for a couple of reasons. As I argued earlier, this town is not following the Capitol Plan and what I really strongly believe the purpose of a Capitol planning is. It's to take the expenditures that we expect coming down the road and, and make them so they don't all come at once and to spread them out to lessen our tax burden. We just, previously just voted a nine million dollar tax burden, which you all know and you heard quite comfortably, that that is going to also trigger some other big expenditures in the future too. Today we have, we're going to, if we vote everything the way it's recommended today, as was said earlier, we have fifteen ballot questions that we'll be looking at. You know, when is enough enough? Another thing too, I stand before you because my tenure here, not only in the Finance Committee but in the Capitol Outlay Committee and in just working with the town on things, I find that people come forward with three ways or three things of projects. There's the need. Do we really need things? There's the want and there's the dream. And quite frankly, when I look at the way that this harbor project has exploded, absolutely exploded, I personally feel that a lot of it is a dream. I think we bought the Downey property. We all were here and we voted to buy the Downey property. It was the right thing to do. We were told then that the Downey property was going to be the area for the maintenance shed. I'm not really personally one-hundred percent behind it, but town meeting heard it, the voters heard it, they're on board with it. So there's no need to, that I see as a need. We should get rid of the Bank Street property. We should build the Harbor Master his new maintenance facility on that property. We should pave that property and we should clean it up because it is an eyesore as the way it's, not really an eyesore, but it needs to be cleaned up because it is the, a beautiful area on the harbor, overlooking the harbor. I just don't believe we need at this time, certainly not a restaurant. Now, everybody's saying, and I'm going to be slapped down, and I quote the email that's going around, that it's not a restaurant, it's a snack shack. What's a snack shack with a huge septic system that includes a grease trap? So guaranteed in a few years, they're going to be back here looking for a restaurant. There's, there's a big boardwalk around that. A lot of things that I don't personally think tonight we really need because we had too many other things that are more important that I think should have been dealt with in the Capitol Plan. Unfortunately, they weren't. So I'm asking the voters to support me this evening by just amending this, keeping in there what we need, reducing the expenditure from two million down to one million. It does not prohibit in any way, fashion, or form for the Harbor Master or the Harbor Committee to come back next year and ask us to consider at that time doing Harbor Office, which I personally think should be the next thing to do, and then maybe come back year three or year four or hopefully never to ask for a restaurant because personally I don't think it's the proper place for a restaurant. So I ask you to support my amendment this evening. Thank you.
Further, further debate on the amendment. We're just on the amendment. Mr. DeCosta.
Yeah, one of the things that Leo took off and with his amendment is the ticket office and just from a safety point of view, that's across the street, Route Twenty-Eight. People have to cross there now. That part certainly shouldn't be excluded from this project. The delay on the other portions are just going to cost you more money. We've kept it within the three million dollars that's, was planned for this project and that one particular aspect about having the ticket office across the street still and not moving it to the same side of the street where the boats are just seems a tragedy that's going to happen and that we don't want to be part of. So we want to move that portion anyways, so I would ask you to vote down Leo's amendment just for that one thing alone.
Further debate on the amendment. Mr. Gunderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the last person's comment, there are a lot of places that you cross Twenty-Eight. If you want to go from, from Bank Street over to Embers, if you want to go to Sunday School right nearby, crossing Route Twenty-Eight is not always an accident waiting to happen. And quite honestly, in two thousand and eleven, a Cape Cod study commented on that, recommended strongly that there be better crosswalk signs and signage at two different places, Gorham and at the ticket office for the cruise line so that people could get across. Now, there's no sidewalks, so they're just going to cross into the grass strips, I guess. But it doesn't have to be as bad as it is if somebody initiated some action with the Board of Selectmen or the Police Department to put in the right signage. Okay, that being said, I'm just trying to diffuse that one little point. Ticket office, let's talk about that for a second. I don't know if you've been on a cruise line or been, gone anywhere where you could have bought the ticket online and you've got a little mobile device, whether it's an iPad or an iPhone, and you just flash it and you get a little barcode in there and you walk right onboard. I'm not sure a ticket office isn't an antique. I'm not sure we want to put any money in ticket offices, nor do I want to put the town money in ticket offices. If you want to lay out an area, makes sense to me, an area on the south side of Twenty-Eight and offer that to the companies that currently are across the street, that's great, but there should be no municipal money involved, no reason to. They got the money, they're making money. Okay, I kind of liked Leo's approach of this phased approach. First of all, we haven't got a contract yet for the waterside. It's been delayed legitimately, but it might be as much as seven million dollars. It could be more given the amount of delay. We don't know what the first price tag is going to be. Secondly, if you're going to do two projects at the same time using the same basic acreage, it's going to be pretty confusing. It's also going to take up a lot of time since we're not having a clerk of the works or a project manager. It's going to take up a lot of time of town staff, engineering, or the Harbor Master. So it kind of makes sense to phase it in. I don't see any reason why not. They both have facilities now that they can use. The maintenance facility would be nice. You could use it as a work area for the contractors as well. The project itself is still in, is still in flux. I mean, somebody just mentioned there was possibly a restaurant café. The pricing of that was extraordinary. The, the ticket pavilion, which was a fixed structure, was the, you know, size of a small house fixed to the ground. The two of those things added up to well over a million dollars, which, which the Harbor Master projected that he might bring in the revenue of about thirty-one thousand dollars a year, twenty from the restaurant and eleven from the ticket pavilion. Well, if you've got an Excel spreadsheet and you have the Department of Revenue website available, you can go up and determine what the debt service is on a little over a million dollars. It's essentially about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So we want to buy thirty-one thousand dollars in revenue with seventy-one, seventy-five thousand dollars worth of town money every year. There's a lot of planning that needs to be done and that isn't a good measure. Now, the other thing is they've reduced some of their wants as the previous speaker said. The want now is a snack shack. Well, you can run the same numbers on a snack shack. There is no guesstimate yet on what revenue you might get, but I can almost be assured that between the facility, the septic system, and the decking that's put up there, you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar structure that we have to borrow. I don't understand why you want to do that for a lousy, say, five thousand bucks a year for, for seasonal snack shack. We're going to lose money in that. So if you've got basic needs for a new maintenance facility, beautification activities, a Harbor Master office for the National Resource Officer and, and all the staff, great, but I don't understand anything about why the town would want to invest in restaurants. Please. We've, we've had trouble keeping the restaurant busy up in the golf course. Restaurants fail. After five years, you get seventy-five percent of the restaurants in this country fail. Let private industry do it somewhere else. Okay, that's basically it. I agree with, I agree with the phased approach. I think it's the way to go. A million now, build it up as you go, less complex project, better chance of success on the waterside, which is what the two hundred slip owners want, what the boat, passenger boat want. Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Further debate and we're just on the amendment at this point. Mrs. Corbett, were you next or was the Harbor Master next? I'm sorry.
He was before me.
Harbor Master.
John Rendall, Harbor Master. I'd like to just go over a few things. So a couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen convened the Sacquetucket Development Committee. And, you know, their charge to the committee was to develop a marina plan that benefited the entire town, the entire community, not just the voters. And so, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been holding public meetings and receiving input from the public and, and really working hard towards this project. And the primary objectives of the plan were, one, to integrate the newly purchased Downey property, to improve the safety of pedestrian access and enhance handicap accessibility, to improve the efficiency of harbor operations, provide options for to improve the efficiency of harbor operations, provide options for increased economic development, ensure the facility is resilient towards sea level rise, and enhance the character, beauty, and attractiveness of the harbor. So those were the objectives laid out to this committee that we, over the last two years, and I'm just a member of the committee. But we've received public input, and we've worked hard at developing a site plan that has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, and that site plan went forward. You know, in 2009, 2011, and 2013, the town funded feasibility studies on options to upgrade and modernize our harbor facilities. These studies were considered by the Sacotucket Development Committee in the development of this conceptual site plan. Last year, we came before the town, and you approved $250,000 for architectural and engineering design of this project. And the town recently was awarded a Coastal Zone Management Grant worth $187,500 to ensure those design plans were resilient towards sea level rise. The town has invested in this project. You know, we're here before you to request $3 million towards the construction of the project. And some of the comments about the restaurant and the ticket office that was initially in the, in the original plan, yes, we've, we have downsized the scope of the plan. And from my perspective, the committee is being fiscally responsible, not coming to you and asking for $5 million, because that's what the initial design is. We're trying to stay within the $3 million estimate. To help offset the cost for the debt service, we will generate annual revenue from winter boat storage fees that will, will keep over on the newly paved Downey property, annual leases from the artisan shacks and the snack shack. We hope to sell the Bank Street facility, and revenue from that sale go in towards this project. In addition, I've applied, the town has applied for a Mass Seaport Economic Council grant for a million dollars to put towards this project. Now, I don't know if that's gonna be approved or not. Awards are sometime in August, but I think there's a good shot we could receive some grant money to help fund this project. Lastly, I just wanna reiterate that this plan has been approved up the chain from the Waterways Committee, to the Finance Committee, to the Capital Outlay Committee, and to the Board of Selectmen Committee, or Board of Selectmen. And a lot of effort has gone into this from a lot of different staff members. And again, this isn't John Rendall, the Harbor Master, you know, design. This is a design of a lot of people who attended these public meetings, provided good input that were considered by the Sacotucket Development Committee. And I would hope that we move forward with the original plan and not accept the amendment. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment. Gentlemen to my right.
Thank you, Tom Dorley. Lived in Harwich, or have a house in Harwich Port for 25 years, for the last two years we've lived here full-time. We live on Sacotucket Bluffs, so we're directly impacted by, by this particular project. Very impressed by what the Harbor Master has said, and my advice would be, as a, somebody who's worked in business for a number of years, if you hire a very competent expert, you pay attention to what your competent expert says. This is a competent man. We paid attention to him in the past. I think we listened to the man this year. As we've been the 25 years in Harwich Port, it's been an amazing development. As we've gone down Route 28, look at the improvements that, that have happened. Not that we needed, we didn't need a new Cumberland Farms, but it sure is an improvement. We didn't need an Ember, but it sure is an improvement. We didn't need a hot stove, we didn't need a, any number of places, but they sure are improvements. All of that does is raise our property values, throws more money into the pot for us to use to continue to beautify this place. Harwich Port has made enormous progress in the time we've been there. This is another indication of that progress. And I do believe that the revenue estimates, which by the way, are the only things that are being taken out of the plan in this, in this amendment, that the revenue projects are way understated and are likely to be much higher, we should reject the amendment and stay with the $3 million program.
Further debate. Mrs. Corbett.
As a proud citizen of Harwich with a measured purse, I support the amendment in terms of thinking of things in a way of looking at dream versus need. And I appreciate the suggestion of an incremental step in perhaps enhancing the property at a later time. I am curious about one fact, and that is, when we downgrade from $3 million to $1 million, whether there is accurate knowledge that $1 million will support the suggestion of the maintenance facility and whatever else has to be done. Do we know that that is going to really cover that?
Anybody wanna just answer that question before?
I'll be happy to answer it, because I did it.
Mr. Kahounis will give you his answer.
Well, it is the answer. Even though I am an unqualified person, I did ask the Harbor Master and the Board of Selectmen and our administrator to give me that number. That million dollars came from them, I didn't pull it out of the hat.
I was just gonna answer.
All right, so further debate, I've got Mr. Hart next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Matthew Hart, I live over on Sammasett Road. In addition to being the chairman of the Waterways and the Sacotucket Development Committee, I'm the whistleblower about this that talked about some of the unqualifications. One of the main driving forces of this facility was public safety and handicap access. If you reject this and go to the amendment that suggested, that postpones that public access safety, and it gets rid of the handicap access. A large portion of that boardwalk that someone didn't like is for people in wheelchairs, and people use crutches, and children. One of the biggest problems that we've had there, and it's always bothered me, and thank God, no one's been killed or hurt, is we're asking our passengers to walk down the road, which is the same road that men and women are pulling trailers with boats. If you leave this the way we're talking right now, they will continue to use the ticket offices over in the Brack property, which means they'll be walking across the parking lot. I'd hate to think what the liability really is there, but these children, because of such ventures such as Captain Kidd, which comes in about four times a day, is very popular with younger children. I'm, I fear for these children, I fear for the people that are handicapped. When I say that someone might not understand what's going on, it's because they're looking at dollars and cents. How much is a little girl, a boy, that gets run over by a boat trailer? What we're putting together here is a package that was asked by the town when they put us on this committee to come up with a rational solution. Part of that solution includes a new nitrogen reduction septic system. I don't know if the septic system that's there now will last, it's had some extensions, but what we're putting in something that'll last the next 40 years. If you go into the Harbor Master's office, and I ask you to do it one at a time, if you're my size, your shoulders will touch either side of the wall. The Harbor Master and its staff work in, in an area that have no doors to get out if there was a fire. They've put up this, there was a gentleman that talked about, we've been kicking cans down the road. That building could not possibly pass the building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector. And what this gentleman is asking, if we break this up into one, the three pieces, that means maybe next year, we'd consider fixing the Harbor Master office, and maybe next year, we would consider having the boardwalk. So I ask you, think about public safety, think about the handicap people, think about how many older people in Harwich, some that live here and some that visit, would wanna go down to that area and look at the water. You're taking that away from them. I'm asking you, please reject this amendment and approve Article 20. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment. Joan McCarty.
Yes, on 53 Dome Road. I think that I haven't heard in a long time of any project for the town that has been so exciting and so, would make the town be a place where people are gonna come, were a resort. And that's what we need. We need places near the water where people can go and sit and, and talk and look at the water. I think slowing it down is just closing the door to a beautiful opportunity to make our town even more available to people. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment. This gentleman in the middle.
Yes, my name is Pete Wall, I live at Magrity Road in East Harwich. I believe Article 20 is asking us to vote on a certain amount of money for the landslide at Sacotucket Harbor. I don't believe there's any mechanism at town meeting to vote for phases. Several people have talked about that, and I've, I've been at town meeting a lot, I never heard of something getting approved and phased. If we don't approve it now, we may never. Please support this article.
Further debate on the amendment. Mr. Lamontia.
Thank you. It strikes me that there are two different issues involved in this project. One is money, and the other is, do we need those other things? So I just wanted to cut, cover two things. We all know that over the last three years or four years, this meeting has authorized the harbors to fix Allen Harbor, Whichmere Harbor, and worked on a number of other projects. It's interesting, I have a little piece of paper here that says, I guess one of the first ones was Allen Harbor, and the town share of the cost was funded by harbor revenue, no taxes. The second one is Whichmere Harbor, and that was a million seven, I guess. And the town share of that was also funded by the harbor after the grants. And now, we're starting to get other grants, I guess, for, towards Sacotucket Harbor. So I guess what I'm saying, there's been a lot of work done in the harbors, and it has not been at the taxpayers' cost. And I think that if it were for some policies that are involved, their selectmen's policies, this project would also be, be paid for through harbor revenue. The problem we're faced with is that the, the Selectmen have a free cash policy that takes 10 to 15% off the top of the revenues and tries to turn, and turns it into free cash. The harbors collect about a million, a million one dollars. They have been working diligently to cover all of their costs, to cover all of their own operating costs, and except for pieces of this project, which they, they can't do at this point, they cover their own costs. So they're not an expensive group of people. So, and I, I would bet that the way they work on things, that in a year or two, they'll be covering a large portion of this money, because they will be getting additional revenue from the harbors with additional slips. So we're not really in that, having that big a problem. The other thing that you should know, that they have been working on committees with various peoples, from people from 2014, and most of the people in town who go to this meeting as just residents, have asked for and wanted a place to walk, a place to sit, a place to look at the water, and a place to enjoy the waterfront. And that's part of what's going on in this, in this project. And I think it'd be helpful in terms of the guests we get during summer. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Maura McDermott, Ridgeport Drive, Harwich Port. I hope we will reject this amendment, and if we don't, I think we should remove our town slogan, "Three Harbors, One Port." This is the one harbor that everyone gets to enjoy. Not really Allen Harbor, or Whichmere Harbor, but Sacotucket. If you've ever seen the poor tourists who have to sit along that godforsaken wall and wait for the ferry, how about a beautiful boardwalk? This is often how most tourists first see our town, coming from the freedom and coming into our town. And I really feel that we should pass this as it is, otherwise, we shouldn't, we should take away that slogan, because it doesn't really reflect that, what we really feel about our town. Three harbors, one port. Thank you.
Mr. Ariels.
I'm just up here, in terms of the Capital Outlay Committee. About three, four years ago, we, this came to us, and being the new guy in town, I didn't know where Sacotucket Harbor was. And I didn't know a lot of assets in the town. So we decided, we put together a bus tour. And the Finance Committee and the Capital Outlay Committee and the Selectmen were invited to go on a bus tour, to see what, what the people were asking for, what the Harbor Master was asking for. So we went out, and again, it was all new to me, and we walked. One of the pieces that we'd be omitting if, in the amendment, is what the gentleman was speaking about, the Harbor Master's office. It's an embarrassment. I've asked him, and John would, would know, three years in a row, do you need money to fix that building? Do you need money to fix the building? It's not safe. Do you need money? So to reject it with this amendment just doesn't cut it. And I just, I, I support not having the amendment.
Further debate. Gentleman in the middle.
Mike Abdell. We've already spent a lot of money here getting this set up. Like the lady a minute or two ago said, you have three harbors in this town. Most people don't know where Allen's Harbor is. The people have boats there, the Marina. Nice little harbor, but not a lot of parking, not a place that's visual out in the open. Whichmere's a nice harbor, too. Nice Marina, can't beat the Marina. Nice dock, brand-new dock. Not a lot of walk-around room. A little bit up on the road there where you can look down over the harbor, picturesque. Your real shining jewel in this town is Sacotucket. I fish in Chatham. We have Stage Harbor, very small. The Fish Pier, very small, very limited parking, lots of people, lots and lots of people. If it was bigger, huh, probably have more. Parking very limited. You got a harbor over here that has a very pretty view, you have plenty of room, you got good parking, you got land out in front that that pizza place used to be at, that we now own, I guess. Good place to put a maintenance building, put it all together. I don't know about the snack shack or the vending, you're gonna need something here. This place is growing. Lots of people are retiring. Give 'em the money, let's get it done.
Further debate, and we're still on the amendment. Yes, ma'am.
When I grew up in Harwich Port, there was no Sacotucket Harbor, there was just Jeremiah's Creek. And the moderator's sister and I would take trips up that creek on a...
This is a long time back, I can tell.
On a, on a fallen bridge, and we got stuck in the mud and had to leap to the ground and came home covered with mud. It was lots of fun if you were 12 or 13. But, really, and of course, I like the old days, but Sacotucket Harbor is the first harbor we have that would be available and is available to more than just the fancy boat people. Whichmere Harbor, if you wanna go really look at Whichmere Harbor, you can just pull off of 28 into that little crescent of lane, of driveway and look at it for a few minutes, but you're not gonna sit there. Allen's Harbor, there's nothing to look at. Not, I'm, I'm kinda provincial, I kinda stick to Harwich. So it took me a while to get to Hyannis Harbor. But I did get there there a few years ago, and my goodness, what a neat place to just go and look at all the artist shacks and have something to eat and watch the boats come in and out. It seems to me that this bigger plan for Sacotucket Harbor would make it more open for people just to enjoy what we have here. Maybe you can't pole up Jeremiah's Creek these days, but you could sit and have a s-... but you could sit and have something to eat and walk along the boardwalk and look at what was coming and going in a way that you cannot do for the other two harbors. So I know it's scary to think of putting that much money into it, and a lot of it will come from all of our taxes, mine included. But I like the original plan, and I would like to keep it that way.
Further debate on the amendment. Yes, sir.
Alan Peterson, East Harwich. I'd like to move the question.
Do I hear a second? Okay, a second all over the house. So procedurally where we're at, we had a main motion, $3 million, and for everything in the article. Before you is an amendment, cuts the $3 million to $1 million, and just has the harbor master department. The motion before you now is to terminate debate just on the amendment. It's an undebatable motion, requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on the amendment, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now take a vote on the amendment. Again, the amendment changes the $3 million to $1 million and cuts all the improvements out other than the harbor master department maintenance facility building. All those in favor of the amendment is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The amendment does not carry. So we're now back to the main motion, which was the $3 million. It's a borrowing, and it's subject to a two-and-a-half debt exclusion ballot question. Is there any further debate on the main motion? Mr. Gunderson.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm going to make it quick, but I got to submit another amendment. I knew you'd love it, but it won't take that long.
Well, let's look at it first and see whether it's within the scope and wasn't addressed by the prior amendment.
Let me just take a look at this room. So we want to eliminate the lease snack shack. That was covered under the prior amendment. We want to eliminate the vendor artisan shack. All right, that was sought to be deleted under the prior amendment. This is new, right? No funds authorized, which should have been fixed. Permitted structures, which are required by private businesses. Diana Downey property, such restricted structures, building foundations, etc. These are private businesses and businesses. How weren't all these things addressed in the prior amendment? Well, it does. We can't do the snack shack. Well, don't argue the motion to me. You can do that to me. I'm just trying to figure out. Is there anything new that wasn't covered? I'm not sure that there was. And I think that with all due respect, this was covered by this because it cut all of that out, the boats are now one and all. But you're seeing this amendment covered. This is all the artists and artists and vendors. It's just covered by this. And it's all covered by this. And I'm wondering if there's anything else that would require the article to do. But I'm only actually checking. So I'm not sure you've added anything different. So there's much to cover there. This was part of the prior amendment. Okay. This was part of the prior amendment. So seeking to really, I'm seeking to add a requirement. No funds, obviously, structures which normally do apply to private business operating. But there's a lot of structure, structure, building conditions, etc. These are high notions covered under the amendment. Right. Is this, is this something new? Yeah. Artist? So I'm concerned about this. Yeah. You know, all of a sudden, it's going to be. Seasonal vendor shacks, they're spelled artisan shack. Yeah. Taking out vendors. Yeah. So, I mean, that may be around the scope. Rustic, it seems to be covered by the amendment. Being covered by the original motion. Covered, not by the original motion. But the voters had a chance. Oh. Could do everything he wants to do in this amendment. Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. The fact that he might not do anything for the project. That's why it's covered under the discussion. So I'm going to do without.
So I have taken a look at the proposed amendment by Mr. Gunderson, and the moderator rules that it was substantially covered under the prior amendment and therefore would be duplicitous. And a portion of it adding an additional, please, just let me finish, because he's entitled to that, analysis. And a portion of it adding an additional type of shack, an artisan shack as opposed to a vendor shack, frankly goes beyond the scope. I've also had the opportunity to confer with the town's council on that, and he concurs with the ruling of the moderator. So I haven't accepted that amendment. So we're still on the main motion, which is the one originally made for $3 million, including everything in the article. Is there any further debate? Mr. Kokonas.
Thank you. I will keep it brief because I understand that having lost that amendment, everything that I'm going to say is probably not going to win anyhow. But I do want to say it just for those people. What was mentioned with my argument of needs and wants was a list of businessmen in Harwich Port who have invested their own money, multi-millions of dollars. Right next door to this harbor, we have a restaurant that is well-known in this town. It's owned and operated by a young gentleman who grew up here in town, has all he can do to keep his employees working all winter long. Believe me, I know. I've been in his restaurant at nine o'clock on a weekday night, and it's empty. But he still keeps his employees there. And what we're about to do right now is you're about to vote to have the town create a space so that we can lease it out for a restauranteer. We'll be subsidizing them. We're going to create a space for craft shops. We'll be subsidizing them, the town. We're in direct competition with people who are paying taxes, investing a lot of their money to beautify, as the gentleman said, beautify and better and raise our standards of living in Harwich Port, especially Cumberland Farms, the hot stove was mentioned. And there's a number of other buildings down there that are vacant, that property owners who are paying taxes and putting, trying to make enough money to live here and stay here and put their kids through school and college. And now we're going to be in competition for them renting spaces by renting artisans' shacks. I don't like it. That's why I took it out in the amendment. The amendment didn't pass. I understand that. But now I have to vote the entire thing down. And that's why I thought the amendment was a better thing because it was keeping in there the revenue plan, the boat storage, the paving of the area. And it gave Mr. Rendon his maintenance shack, which he needed. But now I'm going to ask you all to vote this down because this is a poor expenditure of town funds to subsidize businesses that are already struggling. Let's even look at, it was mentioned and it was brought up, the harbor ferry. The harbor ferry probably makes a miniscule amount of money by selling snacks to his captive audience on the ferry as they go across. Probably makes enough money to not only pay for the stacks, but maybe subsidizes diesel fuel. Now we're going to be selling snacks to people getting on his boat. I'm sorry, the whole plan is wrong. And if, and I know it's probably going to pass here tonight because I got a pretty good judge of reading the crowd, but I hope that people turn out at the ballot box now and turn the entire thing down. Thank you.
Any further debate on the main motion under Article 20? The harbor master?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to briefly comment on a couple of things that Mr. Kokonas just said. This snack shack, 500 square foot, really concession-type building, will be seasonal only. And I just want people to understand, if you come to Sacquetucket Harbor, the only thing that you can currently buy is a bag of ice. And we have hundreds of people coming to Sacquetucket on a daily basis. And I can't even sell them a bottle of water. We have nothing there. I doubt very seriously that this snack shack concept, concession-type concept, will come anywhere close to taking business away from Brax during the summer. And that is not the intent, and I don't think that will happen. And as far as the passenger boat captains, you know, I've talked to the passenger boat owners, including the ferry, and they all are supportive of this project and understand the need to try to address pedestrian safety. And they are in favor of moving their operation to the Downey property to get their people out of harm's way. So I just want to be clear that I have been in dialogue with them. Thank you.
Any further debate on the main motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, this gentleman here.
Dan Hall, Long Pond Drive. I just think this really needs to go through, just on a basic, just safety. There are a lot of families around there. I boat down there, I trailer, and it's an absolute nightmare, pulling in with a big boat, just trying to get out of there. There's kids running around. There's just a lot of people just in the parking lot area, which really needs to be addressed. I'm surprised nothing has happened so far. I think it'd be a shame to turn this down.
Further debate. Mrs. Corbett.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
If there's nobody else who is rising to speak on the motion, I won't need to take that motion. I don't see anybody else who wanted to speak, Mrs. Corbett. So we're going to go to a vote on Article 20. The motion again before you is for $3 million. It's the original motion. It proposes to fund everything that was listed in the article. It is a borrowing, and it is also subject to a prop two-and-a-half ballot question. So it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds majority and therefore passed. And I'll remind you folks of what Mr. Howell said earlier. Anything that we pass this evening can be reconsidered until we close this evening. And what we have been doing, it's 10:24 now. I try not to take up any new business after 10:45. That's what we've been doing regularly. So with that, I'll move on to Article 21. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to purchase and equip three vehicles, as listed in the article, and to further authorize the trade-in or sale of the 1996 Volvo Loader towards that purchase price, where the Board of Selectmen find that the vehicle can be utilized elsewhere in the town. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, that $390,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
All right, the motion under Article 21 is accept and adopt, and the sum of $390,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose, the three items listed in the article. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 22. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow in accordance with Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other authorizing authority, the sum of $700,000 to fund the road maintenance program, as requested in the capital plan for FY '18. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from limitations on total taxes imposed by General Laws 59, Section 21(c), Prop 2.5, the amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on any borrowing authorized under the article. Mr. Ballantyne.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $700,000 to fund the road maintenance program for fiscal year 2018, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $700,000 and to issue bonds and notes, therefore pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, that the appropriation and borrowing authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation of total taxes imposed by Chapter Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2.5, the amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the borrowing authorized by this note. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any sum premium apply to the payment of the costs issued such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
It's moved and seconded under Article 22, accept and adopt. The amount is $700,000. It's proposed to be borrowed, and it is subject to a debt exclusion ballot question. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. It's a borrowing, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds and passed. Article 23. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds sufficient sum of money for the purchase of a 2017 Ford Super Duty F-350, Supercab, a four-wheel-drive Supercab box, and a 2017 Ford Super Duty 350 FR-SRW cab eight-foot box. These vehicles to replace the 2004 and 2007 Ford Ranger and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and $107,856 be transferred from water retained earnings for purchase and equip two new vehicles for the water department and further to authorize trade-in, sale, or repurpose of water department vehicles.
Motion on Article 23 is accept and adopt. The sum is $107,856. It's proposed to be transferred from water retained earnings. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 24. See if the town will vote to appropriate $400,000 to replace the old metal water services with HDPE pipe from the water main to the curb stop along the National Grid Project Route, Great Western Road, Queen Anne Road, Route 39, Main Street, Depot, Street and Depot Road, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto and to determine whether the amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and $400,000 be transferred from water retained earnings to replace the old cast-iron water services with HDPE pipe from the water main to the curb stop along the National Grid Project Route, Great Western, Queen Anne Road, Route 39, Main Street, Depot Street, and Depot Road, including all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Motion made and seconded on Article 24, accept and adopt. The sum is $400,000. It's proposed to be transferred from the water retained earnings. Debate on the motion. Mr. Kokonas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a question in regards to the homeowners that are along this route. If this water main replacement is going to be done, is there going to be additional cost burdens that are going to be put on to the homeowners to have to necessarily tap into that? Or is this all being done in the street and it's not going to affect the homeowner's service?
I see Mr. Thompson, Water Commission, rising. Are you rising to answer that question, Mr. Thompson? Are you rising to answer that question, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, what this project is doing is changing years-old connections on the water main to the curb stop, which is totally in the road and takes it to the edge of the road and hooks into the customer or property owner's current service. It doesn't cost the property owner anything, this is strictly an opportunity for us to upgrade all these connections, so probably 170 thereabouts, and kind of update them so we don't have problems with them later on. It's all black iron pipe, so it's an update, we would do it anywhere we can, and we put new services in for you, we go back to the main, update all that. So it's a main, this thing.
Okay. I didn't see a question, Mr. Kokonas? Thank you. Any further debate on the motion under Article 24? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 25. See if the town will vote to reserve for future appropriation amounts from the FY-2018 Community Preservation Act Fund, estimated annual revenues as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee as follows. A sum of money for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, a sum of money for the acquisition, preservation, and restoration, rehabilitation of historic resources, a sum of money for the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and a sum of money for the Community Preservation Act Fund FY-2018, undesignated reserve, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town transfer from FY-17, estimated revenue, Community Preservation Fund, the sum of $157,375 for the Historic Reserve Fund, $157,375 for the Open Space Reserve Fund, and $157,375 for the Community Housing Reserve Fund.
All right, the motion under Article 25 is accept and adopt, and the amounts, since they weren't in your warrant, are $157,375 for Historic Reserve Fund, $157,375 for Open Space, and $157,375 for Community Housing Reserve. All of those to be reserved. Before we proceed with the debate on this article, I recognize the Chairman of the CPC, Bob McCready, for the CPC's report and recommendation to town meeting. Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Howard adopted the Community Preservation Act, modified to accommodate the replacement of so-called land bank, effective beginning July 1, 2005. The Act established a 3% property tax surcharge supplemented by the state by an amount dependent on other funds raised. The Act requires the establishment of a committee, the Community Preservation Committee, to study and recommend to the Board of Selectmen and the town projects to be funded from these resources. The committee is, as constructed, is comprised of nine members, two selectmen appointees, and representatives of the Housing Committee, Housing Authority, Recreation, Historical Commission, Open Space and Real Estate Conservation, and the Planning Board. Through last year, the May 2016 town meeting, over the 11 years since CPA adoption, CPC has committed over $17 million through over 100 project articles and the funding of debt service on the land bank. At last year's town meeting, there were 11 articles approved by town meeting for about a million and a half dollars and debt service for over $600,000, a total of $2.1 million committed, while income last year for the fund was about $1,007,000. After those commitments in the fall of 2016, the Community Preservation Funds totaled approximately a little under $1 million, on hand and uncommitted, when reviewing new applications for making recommendations to this town meeting. This warrant includes an article for $608,000 to continue funding the land bank debt service. Community Preservation Committee estimates income earned from the surcharge and the state match during fiscal 2017 and includes this estimate in evaluating what is available for committing to new articles. For this year, the income estimate was about $1,006,000. As the state match continues to decrease, this year was about 23%, at the beginning, for the first few years it was 100%. After evaluating the application submitted, in addition to supporting the recurring fund allocation, Article 25, the one that's currently in front of you, and the annual debt service article, which is number 26, for $608,000, the committee is recommending that you support five articles, numbers 27 through 31, for a total of $254,000. And would like to thank town meeting, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee for continuing to support the Community Preservation Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCready. Any further debate now that we have their report, which, as I have received a copy and reviewed it, they voted positively to recommend to the town meeting Articles 25 through 31. And we're on 25. Any further debate on the motion under 25? Hearing none, I'll put that motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 26. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance, $610,000 to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move to appropriate to Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance, $608,950 to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance.
Motion under Article 26 is accept and adopt, the sum is $608,950 to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt, and it is to be appropriated, I should say, from the Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 27. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Funds, Historic Reserve, $5,100 to fund the restoration of the chimney at the Chase Library, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Chase Library. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, Historic Reserve, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $5,100 be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund, Historic Reserve, for this purpose.
Motion under Article 27, accept and adopt, the sum is $5,100, to be transferred from Historic Reserve for this purpose. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It is a vote. Article 28. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance, $28,500 to replace the irrigation system at White House Field. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, undesignated fund balance, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $28,500 be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund, undesignated fund balance, for this purpose.
Motion under Article 28 is accept and adopt, the sum is $28,500, and it's to be transferred from Community Preservation Fund, undesignated fund balance. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 29. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Funds Act, Funds, Undesignated Fund Balance, $167,900 to replace the playground equipment at a restroom and provide other park amenities at Brooks Park. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to CPC Funds, Undesignated Fund Balance, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $167,900 be transferred to Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, for this purpose.
Motion under Article 29 is accept and adopt, the sum is $167,900, it's proposed to be transferred from CPC, Undesignated Fund Balance. Is there any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 30. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Funds, Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, $13,800 to add a series of 20 fitness apparatus stations around Veterans Memorial Field Track. Again, any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to CPC, Undesignated Fund Balance. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $13,800 be transferred to Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, for this purpose.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $13,800 is the motion, be transferred from CPC, for this purpose. Any debate on the motion under Article 30? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I know I told you nothing new after 10:45, I am gonna try and get the next two articles in if we can before we adjourn till tomorrow night, 31 and 32, if you can hang in there. Article 31. See if the town will vote to appropriate from CPC Funds, Historic Reserve, $39,000, to use for restoration of the fence rails at Evergreen Cemetery. Any funds left unspent from the article be returned to the CPC, Undesignated, no, excuse me, Historic Reserve. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the sum of $39,000 be transferred to Community Preservation Fund, Historic Reserve, for this purpose.
Motion under Article 31 is accept and adopt, and the sum is $39,000 from Historic Reserve. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. And that concludes the CPC articles. We are gonna take up Article 32. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow, a sufficient sum of money to reimburse the Howard Conservation Trust for overpayment of the purchase of property for the conservation purposes known as Sutton Property and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $73,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 32 be accepted and adopted, the sum is $73,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Mr. Kokonas?
I was just reading the explanation, but I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. When we purchased this piece of land, I guess subsequently what happened was that the Conservation Trust actually gave us $146,000. $73,000 was put into the wrong account, and basically, we still went forward with the purchase. Did they come up with the second $73,000, and now we're, this action is kind of, it's really reimbursing them their own money, isn't that true?
You're reading it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
They paid the $73,000 twice, the town needs to pay it back to them.
Thank you.
Any debate on the motion under Article 32? Any further debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Now entertain, Mr. Brown, a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting to 7:00 here at the Community Center tomorrow evening.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the annual town meeting to tomorrow night at 7:00 here at the Community Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The meeting is adjourned until tomorrow evening at 7:00 here at the Community Center. Don't forget, we've also got a very short special town meeting, couple of articles at 8:00, but if you get here at 7, we get a quorum, I'm sure we can finish tomorrow night. Appreciate your patience.